Everyone, we will officially call this Manville City Council Workshop to order July 21st, 2025 here at 5:00 PM. We have a few items on the workshop agenda. We're gonna hold off on the first one for now. And we're gonna immediately jump into budget presentations and we will first start with the Personnel Department. So, Mr. Chad, the floor is yours.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Today I have the privilege of presenting the budget for the 2025-26 Personnel Department. For the sake of our council member that was not here last year, my name is Chad Dumont. I am the Personnel Director. I bring about 30 years' experience of HR between ultra-deepwater drilling, military construction on the power plants, chemical plants, refineries. I've spent the past four years here as First Human Resource Manager and now as Personnel Director for the city of Manville. Where's our clicker? Do we have our clicker? There we go. Okay. So for the Personnel Department, we have two distinct divisions. One is Human Resources and the second is IT. Main focus is IT and Human Resources. We both concentrate on our internal customers. All of us, all the employees, contractors, everyone we touch. We are in the process of excellent customer service. Here we go. Okay. I'm gonna learn this eventually. As you can see on the slide, we have six employees total. We do have two new members that have less than six months, but the core of this team has been here in between the two- and five-year period. When I came aboard four years ago, we did not have a Human Resource Department. We built that from the ground up. We had two IT members. We have built IT to where it is today. Okay. When we take a look at Human Resources, I'll just read this off. Human Resource Division, it provides recruiting, staffing, training and development, employee relations, compensation benefits, performance management, compliance, workplace safety, and a diverse inclusion workspace. Let's go into layman's terms here. Human Resources, you can work in all these areas, but if you're not bringing a degree of empathy, if you're not being the face of the city, if you're not practicing what you preach and believing in all of these things, then you will slowly degrade all of these areas. This is something that we take very seriously. We're the face of every employee that comes in. We're the first one to speak to them during the interview process, during applications. We help them through onboarding. We help them through compensation, benefits, performance, all the way through to where if that employee decides to leave for another greener pasture or hopefully when they retire from us 20 years from now. Is there a back button on here? Yep, IT to the rescue.
Another accomplishment is IT helping us out with our power plants.
Yes, and with my eyesight, that is the best thing to do.
Forward and backwards.
Forward and backwards, okay.
Yeah, these two right here.
Okay, very good. Okay. Let's go back. IT, here we go. Now we're back on track. Okay, when we look at IT, managing support of the information and technology infrastructure, cybersecurity, infrastructure management, data management, technical support, project management, same as far as what I talked about earlier with customer service. When our employees are calling IT, it's not just to chat and say hello. Their computers are down, their internet is down, there's issues with their printer, what have you. Our focus is to make sure that we're prioritizing, that we are getting things done in a timely manner, and we're doing it in a manner that the employee doesn't feel like they're being downgraded by someone coming to help them. So that is a major, major focus that we have with IT. Okay. When we look at our accomplishments in 2025, I'm gonna start off with Human Resources. We processed in 22 new employees this year. May seem low, but for a city our size, 22 is a good number for us to process in. What I'm most proud of is that we've lowered our separation number by a third. That is a very, very good number for us. When I started four years ago, it was in the upper teens, close to 20. We brought that down to single digits now. Now, I attribute that to our benefits package, to everything that we've focused as far as on leadership, on training, and working with our employees. We've also implemented two additional Employee Wellness Days. In the past, we would have one day for open enrollment, which I'll give a little plug to everyone, July 30th, that's gonna be open enrollment, everyone is invited. We've also included two additional days because a lot of folks aren't here during Open Enrollment Day. We have people that start in October, they start in November, they start in January. Now we're bringing in our insurance companies, our benefits companies. We're bringing in local businesses that are either in dental or vision or credit unions to where they're able to come in and interact with our employees on two days in addition to our open enrollment. That way there's a face and people are getting the information that they need. When we look at the accomplishments as far as IT, the planning, the development, and getting all of the infrastructure ready for the new PD station, that has been a major task, as I'm sure Chief will relate to. IT has worked diligently as far as making sure that everything is up and running for the opening of that building, and I'm happy to say that will be the case. Also, we've reinvented our cybersecurity. We realized we had some shortfalls. We've identified that. We have a new third party that is helping us with us, helping that with us, and we are also engaging the employees more as far as each month or each, every other month, we're dealing with more cybersecurity training. So a lot more interaction. The last would be our two-function identification authorization system that is helping us more on our security, making sure that the folks that are logging into our computers are the folks that need to be logged in. When we look at our key challenges, key challenges, again, cybersecurity. The bad actors that are out there are not taking a break. They are hitting us each and every day, and it is our job to make sure that we have the systems, the protocols in place to stop it. It's not a matter of if someone's gonna try to hit us, it's when they're gonna hit us. So we need to make sure that we are constantly vigilant and constantly promoting for all of our employees on the possibility of this happen. On the HR side, we are still dealing with the ramifications of COVID. We have an aging population, a lot of folks are getting ready for retirement, and we don't have as many people coming into the workforce that are looking for jobs in these sectors. So we are constantly looking on how we can work with our employees. Maybe they're getting close to retirement. That is something that we could work with and possibility as far as consultants later on, to where we're not losing all of that information that we've gained through the years. And also working heavy on retention with our current employees. And I applaud the council for helping us as far as with the benefits and the dependent care in the past. That has helped us tremendously as far as help retaining our employees. As far as needs, HR is only asking for one need this year, and that is the beginning of an HRIS system. We're not asking for a Cadillac version. This version we're looking at is very basic, that will help us with applicant tracking. It'll help us with onboarding. It'll help us with documents, getting the message out to employees. This is a very basic block that would run us around $22,000 per year. By having this system in place, we'll be able to defer as far as adding another employee, possibly for another year. So when I measured as far as whether or not this would be good for us or not, $22,000 versus bringing in another employee at X salary plus benefits plus burden, I feel this would be a good investment for the HR department. As far as IT, again, we only have one ask this year, and this is a remote management and monitoring suite. The system will be used for a central management system for all workstations and to where we'll be able to remote in to all stations to help our employees and also help with enhancement of security and cybersecurity on that. Now, this one is a little bit more expensive. We're looking at 30, a little over $35,000 for implementation, and then we're looking at a little over $25,000 as far as dues and subscriptions for each year that we complete. And last but not least, I'm happy to say that we are not asking for any zero turns and we're not asking for any Ford F-150s for the Personnel Department. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Chad. I was really hoping you were gonna ask for a zero-turn mower, I feel like.
I thought about it, but the little patch of grass behind my office, they take care of it.
They take care of it for you. All right, well, thank you, Chad, for that overview. Council, any comments and/or questions? Councilman Bonner?
I just have one, Chad. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for the job that y'all do with the employees. I think it's a very good thing that we have as much communication as y'all seem to have with all the employees, explaining benefits and things like that, and I appreciate it. My one question is on the IT request, the $35,250, that's a one-time versus the $25,200.
Yes, sir. We would have a one-time fee for implementation, and then we'd be looking at the additional fee each year for the right to keep it.
Yeah, as a person that's usually sitting at home when I have an IT problem, I like the ability to be able to remote in and fix things instead of having to come up here all the time. So I think that helps a lot.
Yes, sir, I would.
That was my only question there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions?
Um, yes.
All right, Councilwoman?
Thank you for only requesting a very expensive software. Have we looked at other softwares that do maybe the same thing that aren't as robustly expensive?
Yes, ma'am. We've looked at several softwares, and this one is the Bare Bones.
Bare Bones.
Other softwares that are out there, if we were to get the full package, would run somewhere between the $48,000 and the $50,000 range.
Can you give us a little more information on what problems it's specifically solving?
I wouldn't say that it's solving a problem, but it's helping us evolve.
In which way?
In, okay. So the applicant tracking is going to help us as far as professionally keeping track of each applicant in this cover court. Right now, it's Word and Excel. When we go into needing reports, when we're going into gathering information for presentations, Word and Excel isn't the best option. We need something that's more professionally up-to-date as far as a program that can do that. This is also gonna help us more on the onboarding. There'll be more options as far as video, more options as far as putting things out prior to the employee coming in to complete their paperwork. This is also gonna give us a cloud-based document area to where we can secure files. We're not gonna have as many filing cabinets and wasting as much paper and everything else as far as keeping those documents and then pulling those documents if we need to send them out for a report or an investigation or anything of that nature. And it's also gonna give us the opportunity to where when we have any change of personnel policies, change of procedure or whatever, it's gonna be a mass communication system to where we can blast that out to, if we just need PD, we can send it just to PD. If we just need to send it to Public Works, we can send it just to Public Works or send it to everyone.
So what I'm hearing is that it will help us catch up with the times. It'll help us have a more secure network, but also a more professional system for the amount of applicants and onboarding that we're doing across the entire city of employees.
Absolutely. It's gonna bring us up to the times, and it's also going to defer us from having to bring someone else in as far as the workload. This should help us to where we should be able to handle another maybe 25 or 30 employees before we're ready for that next step.
Okay. The next question I have is, it's gonna help us not have to bring in or hire another person. So if we're looking at that, do we have the data or just a rough number of the time that it is going to save from your perspective as well as across the board, company-wide? When you bring all the things that it does together, how efficient is the system going to be after it's been implemented and onboarded?
Well, there's gonna be a few areas where it's going to save time on. Right now, HR is myself as Director and then Brianna Bobb as far as the generalist. When everything is working perfectly, we don't have any problems, we're just taking care of the onboarding, we're just taking care of the benefits, we're good. Unfortunately, in a perfect world, that's not every day. We're dealing with issues on one side, or issues with benefits, excuse me, with benefits, or we may have to deal with a dispute resolution, something of that nature. That's where having this system to where it makes the process quicker, to where we can dedicate more time to these other issues whenever they arise is gonna be very beneficial to us.
Okay, so is it, and another question that I have is, do we currently have, per se, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different systems that this will replace? Is it going to save us any money from any other aspect as far as something that we already use to track and?
So right now, no. The only other system that HR would use would be our payroll system where we take care of the front end of the employee that's coming in. Payroll takes care of the back. I have looked at that system as well to see if we can utilize that system. Unfortunately, the cost and the track record for that system is not very good on what an HRIS system should be.
Is this system going to help us with any liabilities to protect the city?
This will help us as far as reporting. It'll make sure that we're accurate, so yes, ma'am, I would say yes.
Perfect. Well, I like that idea. I definitely think that our motto, our city on the rise, should definitely have some level of professionalism and protection on the backend when we're dealing with so many employees. I do like that aspect of it. And I love what you said about we are seeking towards a culture of excellent service, customer service. I mentioned that to Dan Johnson and to council two years ago, that that is, my goal for the city is that we're known for serving our public and our internal customer with excellence, which is our employees. If we serve them first, then they will radiate that to the community as well, so.
Yes, ma'am. That is my thought process, and that is something that I instill upon everyone who works under me daily, whenever we talk. Customer service comes first.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chad, to echo the points of the two council members, thank you for everything that you and your team does. Two questions. The HRIS system, can that integrate with our existing finance and payroll system, whether it be, you know, sending payloads or doing a push or pull through the API? It seems to me that even the most basic systems have that capability now.
Yes, I've been told it can. Now, I have not run through a Sandlot yet of doing that, but I'm being told it would.
Okay, awesome. Love to hear that. For the Remote Management and Monitoring Suite, are there any grants that are out there that could help us secure or at least cover the one-time implementation cost?
That is a very good question. Pat, have we looked into that? I'm gonna defer to my IT manager on that one.
Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you. I have not explored that avenue, but it's definitely worth exploring.
Okay. How many hours of implementation does that one-time fee secure for us in support?
That fee has a company coming in doing the initial setup to be sure it's configured properly, and it's doing a portion of our onboarding so that we're sure that we're doing it properly, and then from there we do the rest of the onboarding. So it's only covering a portion of our onboarding, it's not necessarily per hour.
Okay. And are they providing recurring support costs? Is that a part of the yearly fee that we pay?
The yearly fee is just covering increase in our current licensing. There's no support fees going along with that.
Okay. Is there a reason why we're having them come on-site compared to doing it remote if it's a remote management company? Because I know on-site fees are usually higher than remote.
Sure. Most of that stuff will be done remotely, because that's all done in the cloud.
Okay.
The only part that they may have to come on-site for is the onboarding portion for our various systems to be sure that that's being done properly.
Okay. Well, if there's ways that we can look to lower what that implementation cost would be, that's the recurring fee, that's palatable, that's reasonable for the size of our organization. That's a very hefty one-time implementation fee, so I would just say just hone in on that. But I love that you guys are gonna be utilizing the system. It's a very important thing, and appreciate you guys putting that request forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, any other comments or questions for Patrick, Chad, or the team? No. Hearing none. Chad, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to the budget presentation for the Finance Department. Ms. Rosie is over there twinning with Joes. Welcome, Ms. Rosie. How are you doing?
I'm doing good. And yourselves?
Doing good. Thank you for asking.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to present our finance budget presentation of finance, safeguards, and accounts for all the city's financial assets. We have various divisions in the department, and they are being treated by four different people. Myself, Brenda, Tristan, and Natalie. Accounts payable and purchasing is Brenda and Tristan. Payroll is Brenda. Utility billing and collections is Tristan, Brenda, and Natalie. Financials, grants, and budgets is myself. Utility billing and collections imports your meter readings, verifies them that they are correct, creates and mails out your bills, collects the payments from our customers, and of course, they try to do the best customer service to our residential and utility private employees. The budget and finance, we enter the required journal entries, we review, work them by team members, we reconcile the bank statement and all the general ledger accounts. We create the financials as needed. Our customer service is dedicated to all areas. We do it with our employees and different financial and government entities. Accounts, payables, and purchasing. We add vendors, we process purchase orders, we enter invoices and create payments to vendors. We have customer service to our vendors and employees. Payroll, we verify time cards are correct, we process payroll, quarterly's and W2s and any other monthly report required for payment. Our customer service is to our employees and different government entities. While finance doesn't have a good metrics to measure our growth in our duties, we can see increases in water, payroll accounts, and vendor payments. As you can see on the payments, it used to be 1,085. Right now, we're already at 1,673 and growing. Last year, we had 2,042. Our invoices, last year we had 4,329 invoices that we processed. We are at 3,950 currently. Employees, back in 2022, we were at 92, we're now currently at 114. Utility accounts, we were at 1,508 and we're currently at 2,024. Credit card fees, we were at 27,000 back in '22, we're currently at 122, projecting to hit 150,000 by the end of the year. I went a little too far. Some of our accomplishments for this year, we've completed the fiscal audit for 2024. It's just pending final approval. We received a GFOWA award for the 2024 budget. We've updated our vendor policy. I completed the Leadership Academy and attended the Texas GFOWA conference. Goals to complete for the rest of the year is finish our budget for '25, '26, set up the new fiscal year, achieve a certification from the CGFOA for Rosie, for me, and review the investment policy. Goals to complete next year, improve finance policies and procedures, bring fixed assets in-house, and continue our excellent customer service. The needs and wants that we want for next fiscal year, I'm asking for the fixed asset module for INCODE, that is $5,000 per the first year and then $600, I mean, sorry, $800 reoccurring. I'm asking for a mail folding machine, which is approximately $4,000, a staff accountant with $70,000 plus benefits, and a grant coordinator. A staff accountant, 70,000-plus benefits, and a grant coordinator, 52,000-plus benefits. The staff account I'm requesting is currently our fixed assets is being done by our CPA firm. I finally got a copy of that worksheet a few months ago, and I discovered that, yes, they are keeping track of it, but they're not keeping track of it in detail. For example, if we purchased four cars this year, they just lump them together, four cars at so much amount of dollars. So I'd like to be able to keep track of when we purchase items, when we dispose of them, what value they were at, how much depreciation we have. Right now, I have to wait until the auditor gives me the depreciation number, so I can book it at the end of the fiscal audit. The grant coordinator, as stuff is, as grants are growing, as contracts are growing, I need somebody that can just sit there with paperwork and assemble everything that's needed for the grant process, for FEMA, for any other, for TIDOM. Usually, they require us to keep track of the application, the award letter, every invoice, every payment, and keep it in a paper file, not just in a online. So that's why I'm requesting those extra people. And that's it for the finance presentation. If you have any questions?
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Rosie. I'll kick us off with this one, counsel. You know, you said in the presentation, you guys don't have a good metric on how to measure the growth in your duties, but you do. When you look at those numbers and how many invoices you're processing, and employees and accounts, and we know with every account that you get calls and questions, and you have to coordinate with Public Works, somebody out there and check on the meters, you guys do a lot, and you do have a good way to measure it, and this is a testament to the work. You're a small, but you're a mighty team, and we appreciate what you do. Quick questions here. Talking to the grant coordinator, one of the questions that I had is how do you measure the return on that investment? You talked to that a little bit, but how much time would you say that your team spends per month managing?
Actually, right now, we're not doing that. For example, if we have a, because it's not only for grants, I also want to do it for every contract that we have out there. I want to be able to make sure that if the copier's supposed to charge us $500 a month, it's only going to be charging us $500 a month or three. So I want that kind of compliance, somebody that can keep track of all our contracts, all our addendums, not just with the developers, but within the operations of the city.
Okay, so this would be slightly different than just purely a grant coordinator. Okay. How, for the positions that you want to add, how would you define the KPIs to evaluate the performance of these new positions?
I would say it in our accuracy, more than anything else, because the more I burn our ladies, the more we're bound to make mistakes that we shouldn't be making. We don't like to make mistakes in finance, so we try to correct them as soon as possible. But this would help in that area more than anything else. And the mistakes that we can do in compliance, the mistakes that we can do just processing a payment. Because right now, my accounts payable, Tristan does it one week, Brenda does it next week. When Brenda's doing payroll, Tristan does it. When she's doing utility billing or late payments, Brenda does it. So it's like, it's back and forth, and that doesn't work very well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that answer. Last question I have is the fixed asset module. How is that going to improve our auditing processes?
First of all, the numbers would be done by the time the auditor's here, so it would speed up the final audit. Second of all, it gives us real numbers, that we can actually estimate what our depreciation will be for the following years. We can actually see, hey, we've had this vehicle five years now. I could call chief, I can call Robbie and say, look at this vehicle, are we going to need to replace it anytime soon?
Well, I think the bang for the buck there is well worth it. And Councilman Lance, or Mayor Protem Lance had brought it up about not just tracking the depreciation, but also the replacement cost, to ensure that we can establish true enterprise funds. To be setting aside that money is key. I also love, I just want to comment, love the mail folding machine. As somebody who likes to send old-school letters, that is a pain, and that is such a waste of time for you guys to have to fold those letters, and then it's just well worth the money on that. So I would highly encourage that one. Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from counsel?
Just one.
Okay. We'll go Councilwoman Sarmiento, and then we'll go Councilman Bonner.
That was the one thing that caught my eye when you were going down the numbers of the payments, invoices, employees. And I thought invoices, 3,900, who's folding those? Is that manually being folded and stuffed and mailed?
Yes, ma'am.
How much time does that take?
When it's a utility, it takes about a day and a half.
Wow. Okay. So that would be roughly 52 days or more, actually more like, hmm, 75?
It's 12 months. It's about 12, no, it'd be about 12, 18 days out of the year for the utility.
Oh, 18 days out of the year.
But then you have, yeah. Then you have the late payments, the late notices, the utility.
The ones that go on top of that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting. Is there any other manual things that we're doing that is taking a lot of time that could be a little more efficient?
Of course, the scanning, but that's not going to go away anytime soon. Even if we get any kind of AI software, we would still have to scan it for it to pick up the information.
Yeah, AI is not going to replace everything, that's for sure.
Yep, unfortunately.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Bonner?
Hi, Rosie. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask about the grant coordinator. I know this year, y'all have found a couple of grants. What were the value on those? I'm trying to remember offhand. One of them was?
One is for the generators, a little over 400,000. Of course, everything that came in through Hurricane Merrell from TIDOM, that's also considered a guarantee, even though it's through FEMA.
So it sounds like that would have paid for that employee right there, just on that. And now we're talking about having somebody that can look for them all the time. So not only the time it puts back into your schedule or somebody else's schedule, just that person, it seems like it pays for itself rather quickly. Going back to the credit card fees, I want to say we talked about this last year, too. So now we're up to, this is our cost?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So, and that's, we're not charging any fees for credit cards right now.
No, we are not.
So, at what point do you feel like we're going to have to change that model?
I think we're at that point already.
And what would you propose we do there?
Well, what the other departments in the city are doing is that they're transferring all the credit card fees to the customer.
And I see that all the time. Each time I use credit cards, there seems like in the last two to three years.
Even restaurants are charging you a certain percentage back in your.
Yeah, I know that it's 3%, 4%, whatever, depending on which card you use. And I think, once we set up, I think we need to set up a fee schedule for that. And once we do, we need to pay particular attention, because I know, like, American Express charges more than MasterCard does. So I really think we need to, I know it's an expense, but it's also a privilege to use a credit card and a choice. You can still either pay in place or pay by check for pretty much no fee, right?
For no fee, you can come in person, pay cash or check, or the other option is the auto draft, where we go in into your bank account and take it out for free.
The ACH, which I use that all the time. So I think I would, I would love to see that 122,000 go away.
That makes two of us.
That's a lot of money right there, and it's only going to go up every year.
And that could pay for some of the repairs that Ernie needs in his area.
Exactly. So that's my one comment, I mean, my two comments there. Thank you for the presentation, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments and/or questions from counsel?
Just one, quick one.
Yes.
Sounds like that 122,000, if we can pass that on to the people who choose to use a credit card, it would pay for at least one of the employees that we're looking for, maybe even two. The question that I have is, in my experience with the credit card, if it's a credit card, that's where the 3% comes in, but if it's a debit card, that's more of a, like a fixed rate. I can't remember what it is, but.
Actually, now they're going closer to 5% on the credit card fees.
On credit card fees. But I know that debit, whenever you go to POS, if you put your debit, it's processed differently.
It's a slightly different rate. It's like a 3%.
Yes. So I'd like to see what it would look like to just switch the, is it difficult to change the payment system to where when they go in to pay for it, or they set up on auto?
We currently have the court doing that already, where when they go in and pay, the credit card fee charges their fee directly to them, and they only deposit what's our portion into our bank account, so we never see the fee whatsoever.
Yeah. I mean, I know when I call to pay my mortgage, they charge me a nice $10 fee just to take my payment, and that's with an ACH. So I think to Councilman Bonner's point is, it's a luxury to use your credit card to pay that. So unfortunately, that's a hefty fee that the city's eating. I'd like to see us, I think we talked about this last year, didn't we give direction or something, that we should look at that? No, we don't remember? I'm going to go back and see.
I thought we at least came up on that.
We did, definitely talked about it, and we wanted to see some information on that afterwards, because that's a hefty number. Last year was $93,000.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see if we see room. Let it happen.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be the minority in this. I think we already charge people enough in taxes. We charge them high water bills, not as high as others, but high water bills. I think that this is a service that their property taxes should more than cover already. I don't want to discourage people from timely paying their bills by discouraging credit card use, because that's more of an effort that you guys are making in order to collect by discouragement of a 3% to 5% fee when people are already hurting. While I get that there's certainly other options, the reason why we made this change two years ago was because we said people are paying high taxes already. If this is a cost that the city can consume, we should consume that cost. So I'll take a stand of still being against charging the credit card fees, but I know I'm overruled within that. I just want to make sure that that's where my position is. You know, if we had one of the lower tax rates around, and we have low water fees already, I could, I could get behind that. But I can't get behind it right now. But I know it's a lot of money, that definitely would fund another position for you guys, so I respect that. But I'm still in support of that decision we made. But I respect y'all's perspectives there, too.
I just want to say that they do have the option to come and pay in person and/or send a check, or do ACH, and that's a zero fee. But if they choose to use a credit card, then I think that we shouldn't have to, if we don't want to have to raise taxes, to your point. We want to keep taxes low, so this is an expense on the taxpayer. So that's, that's why I see that. And I do think that we want to make it as easy as possible, but at the same time, that's 122,000 that our taxpayers are paying back themselves. It's robbing from Peter to pay Paul, so that's just my stance on that. Clearly, respect everybody's on that, but I think I would like to see that at a zero. Thank you.
I also agree. I mean, I'm, it makes it sound like if I want the fee, I'm for increasing taxes when I'm not. And I'm, I don't see that any, I think cutting the fee out, like Councilman Sarmiento said, that's cutting taxes right there, when we're not having to pay 122,730. So the options, there's, there's not just one option to keep from using a credit card, there's multiple. I just, I don't see paying these fees forever, and I don't think it's a burden on our citizens to ask them to choose one of the other options if you don't want to pay the fee.
I was just going to add that, I mean, most people are aware that if you choose to pay something on a credit card, you're going to be paying some type of additional fee in interest, or whatever it may be, on the credit card. And I don't think that charging 3% or 5%, whichever card they deem, is going to make them pay on time more than they would regularly. So I'm definitely for, I actually, I mean, obviously, I have Manville utility account. I thought it was already included, but I also pay for my bank account, so.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rosie. Any other comments and/or questions from counsel? So specifically on the fee discussion, let's just have an agenda item about that for the future, that way we can just make sure to take a vote there, give you guys some clear direction on that. Because I believe that was a change that was made, I don't know if that was a change made administratively or through ordinance, but we would just have to take a look there to see what happened with that, and make sure to give counsel the opportunity to change that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Good conversation there, counsel. Dan, do we have the presenters here for this first agenda item? Okay, so I'll read this off, and then Dan, Joe's, we'll turn it over to you guys and then jump into it. We have 19 minutes left for the workshop. We have the presentation on proposed commercial development at the northwest corner of Kirby and Highway 6. Team?
Thank you, Mayor. Won't take up too much of their time, since, like you said, our time is limited. But so this is the, it's just a potential development coming in just immediately to the west of Manville Town Center, so on the, like the mayor said, northwest corner of Kirby and Highway 6. So it's a pretty good size of land that is, has yet undeveloped. It is currently in our ETJ, so not in our city limits. And so that's one of the components that they want to talk about, talk about tonight. And if you had a chance to pull it up in your packet, there's some pretty good exhibits in there, so if you guys are ready, come on up.
And Dan, just as I come forward, a clarification. Tonight, they're just looking for general feedback from counsel. Do we like what they're showing? What's the end result?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's exactly right. So we've met with them, I guess, twice now, and, you know, they've gotten sort of the feedback from staff, and we all thought it was appropriate now to get feedback from counsel. Obviously, there are plenty of things that would need to come into play as far as counsel would be involved. If they're going to come into the city limits, for instance, if they're going to, you know, if there were a PUD, if there were any type of financing, anything like that. So there are going to be many more times that they would be in front of you for action items, but this is just really to get your, your feedback, you know, hey, do we, do we want these guys to come into Manville, basically?
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Ryan Sweeney. I'm with BCS. And this is Jack Berger. We're partners there together, and we have one other partner. We're a real estate development company. We specialize in retail development, mixed-use projects, and we're really excited to be here. Over the last couple of years, we've been working with this particular property owner. I'm happy to say that we've made a lot of progress. And some things had to happen behind the scenes to really create the opportunity, specifically with Beazer Homes, who are planning, you know, their master plan community to our north. So we're working very closely with them, and Jared Bolan with EHRA, to assess really the viability of a mixed-use retail development at this site. And so, you know, being here is really important to us, so we can start the communication process with all of you, and we are very excited about it. There's a lot of momentum with what we have planned here. We have some really incredible retail users, regional retail users, that'll really spearhead and anchor what we see to be, you know, top-notch type of retail development. So Jack can talk more about the retail side, and I can talk more about the process that we're going to need to go through as far as obtaining and constructing the necessary utilities. The property is extremely flat. There's a lot of detention and drainage that needs to take place. We're working very closely with Beazer on a regional detention plan to not only cut costs, but create efficiencies within the area and protect, you know, the drainage patterns of this area. And so I'm really, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I can let Jack talk about the development specifically.
Yeah, thanks for having us. And, yeah, we're super excited about this project. Do we have a site plan we can pull up? Is this, okay, perfect. We got control. So I know you guys probably already know this, with HEB open, Lowe's under construction, but this, this intersection, there's only so many intersections that have the ability to turn into true regional power centers. And a lot of factors come into play, traffic count, density, incomes, but a lot of it is spacing. And so naturally, the anchors don't want to go too close to each other, and so this site actually spaces perfectly with where Pearland is, to the north, and then Sienna to the west. So we have a ton of interest from, from all sorts of commercial users. We've got anchors like Home Depot and Walmart, and we've got medical users like Kelsey Sebold, talking to some of the big guys. And then we've got a lot of pad, restaurant users like In-N-Out Burger, Chick-fil-A, Portillo's out of Chicago, who's starting to expand in Houston, Pete Terry's at Austin, and that's just to name a few. So we've got interest from a lot of high-quality users that are not only amenities for the community, but also provide a lot of sales tax and out-of-alarm taxes to whatever municipality has control of the mud of the city. So at the end of the day, we're really excited about this project. We've made, this isn't just lines on paper, we have active deals working with a lot of these users. This site is ready to be developed. It's been ready to be developed, candidly, for the last five to seven years. The biggest issue is the lack of utilities. So there's, there's no utilities to the site, and we have a path forward to get the utilities And we have a path forward to get the utilities there, create some efficiencies, as Ryan was talking, alluding to with Beazer, creating a really good working relationship with Jared Bolan. And his team has been super helpful. They've, they know the area, working the Beazer tract amongst other ancillary tracks. So we, we've got the right team and we're excited to get in front of you guys and start collaborating and figuring out a way that we can create a win-win. So at the end of the day, there is a lot of sales and out-of-lorm tax to go around here, so.
And as Dan mentioned, the, the property is entirely within the ETJ of City of Manville. And we're really, we come before you with open arms and just really ask the question, what does the city want? You know, what does the city see here as far as the city limit lines go? You know, do, do you want to annex the property? Do you have a preference? To, to obtain the utilities, we would need to have an agreement with MUD 42 through their water supply that the city currently provides to that particular MUD district. The inter-local agreements with 29 and 47 for water and sanitary, you know, those are kind of interchangeable, but different. Those have agreements with the city. And then ultimately, the city will have to consent to any annexation into MUD 47. So we, we've got a lot of different options to look at. And what I think would be beneficial is for us to continue the conversation and provide you with more information as to what we feel is the most logical path forward. You know, to, to get those sales tax revenues, you'd have to have the property in the city limits or some type of overlay district, for example, a PD of sorts, something like that. So we're willing to move as fast, but as slow as necessary to accommodate the, the timing of the city. We, we don't have the luxury of, of all the time in the world, so we'd like to, you know, really take advantage of, of the momentum that we have and, you know, really see what we can get done pretty soon. So if you have any specific questions as far as the, the construction of the project, you know, we, we have some construction budgets already put in place. And what Jack and I have done over the last few years is worked with other cities. City of Magnolia, we have a really strong relationship. We have a, a great relationship with the City of Montgomery right now. City of Mont Belvieu, Orange, you know, similar situations where we've developed a significant, some not as significant as this, of public infrastructure work. So we're going to have public drainage. We're going to have the extension of Kirby Drive. We're going to have 5,000 feet of public sanitary sewer line that's going to go all the way up to Rodeo Palms. We're going to have extension of water lines, you know. So these are massive projects that are, that are going to serve this regional area. And what we've done with these other cities is, is created a win-win. And that's, we're going to do all this work. We're going to pay for all this work. We're going to bring these retailers. Everybody's excited. And then they start hitting their numbers and the city starts generating sales tax. And so we work through development agreements, PUDs, 380 agreements, those types of things, which all the cities, we've, we've, we've got a pretty good track record, if given the opportunity to talk through it, so.
Well, gentlemen, appreciate you coming prepared tonight and giving us this overview. I've heard very reputable, that you guys are very reputable organization and company. People talk very highly of you and excited to, to work with you guys. I'm going to hit a few quick questions. We'll open it up to Councilman Bonner next, and we'll dive into it here. Based off of the site plan, has a traffic impact and utility needs assessment been done, based off of what you guys are?
The TIA has not been complete. We are currently working through the, the utility capacity estimates. It's still a little bit of a, a moving target. You know, different users have different utility requirements, but we have a very close budget as far as capacity goes. But it's, I mean, we're, we're going to be doing the TIA here pretty, pretty soon, wouldn't you say?
Yes, we're currently drafting proposals and you to get it kicked off.
So we have a regional detention proposal, the TIA proposal, which, working with Beazer, we, we've already agreed to share in some of those costs.
Okay. Good to hear that. I appreciate the graphics showing the stabilized revenue in year 16 value and revenue. That's helpful to project it out. Big numbers guy there. This list, I'm assuming this list is an assumed list of who would be operating off of the, of the parcels. Is that correct? Because if that's the case, we're going to have three targets in town, multiple Kelsey Sebolds, because every developer that comes to us is saying right now, they're going to have Target, Home Depot, and Kelsey Sebold, it seems like. So this is?
Well, we don't, we don't, okay, so totally get that. And we're, we're in a spot now where we can't come to you and say, hey, we've got signed deals.
Gotcha.
But we're the only developer right now that can deliver, deliver, well, come, come with the deliverable side, assuming we get things worked out. And we do have, like, to be candid, we have Home Depots ready to go on this site. And that's why we're showing them here. Kelsey Sebold, you know, that's, that, that may happen. It's zero sales tax, so it's not as, as attractive. We wanted to be conservative in what we were showing. The reality is, if we get this deal done with Beazer to share in efficiencies and economies on the detention, we'll free up the six-and-a-half acre western, western pad. So if you look at this, the western, the western back area is showing up as detention. So it looks like, just based on the conversations and the progress we've made with Beazer, that we'll get that back. So we'll push detention to the back. And that's huge. Because that'll free up another, you know, one to two to three anchors, depending how big they are. So imagine like an Academy, Hobby Lobby, those kind of users. Obviously, Weitzman has, you know, plenty of land over there and they've got a lot going on. But we are on Highway 6. And having full access to Highway 6 is huge, as opposed to being on a one-way feeder. So if you're a fast food restaurant or any type of convenience operator, Highway 6 is much preferred over 288. But everyone's, at the end of the day, everyone's going to win here. This is a major regional intersection. And if a site can be developed, all four corners are, are ready to be developed from a demand standpoint.
Appreciate that. And you mentioned, I heard you mention 380 agreements. So you guys would be looking for development incentives?
Yes.
Well, yes, yes. Because the, the, the amount of public infrastructure that's required to, to serve just this 47 acres impacts over 1,000 acres. And so it's, it's just part of the feasibility. We don't know what that number is exactly. But yes, that would be a part of the conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a worthy conversation to have because there'd be things that, speaking for myself, I'd be looking for, which would be having you guys be annexed into the city limits, entering into a PUD to have some requirements regarding land use, regarding aesthetics. We want to ensure that we bring in the right types of businesses. And we want to have a partnership with you guys on making sure we, we facilitate businesses that are sustainable and invested in the long-term within, within Manville. 380 discussions, it's always a give-and-take relationship. And we've said that we are not in the business of incentivizing residential development. Commercial development's really what we want to see. So I think there's, personally, I think there's an opportunity there to, to have that conversation. But a big thing is going to be, being in city limits for, for me. I don't want to hog all the time. Appreciate you, gentlemen, for answering those questions for me. Councilman Bonner, we'll go to you, then we'll go to Mayor Protem Lance.
Evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Yeah, I'm excited about the possibility of, of sales tax revenue here. I, I see this as maybe one of our first opportunities to, to do a little bit better on sales tax revenue than what we've been able to do in the last 10 years of the development around here. So I'm excited about that. And the, the key players that you're talking about, if that comes true, I don't have to go to Alvin anymore to get my tires worked on. So I'm a lot of, a lot happy about that. Utilities. Dan, how close are the utilities there?
So that's certainly part of the, the mix is, you know, like they mentioned, MUD 47 is immediately to their north. That's a, an ETJ MUD. MUD 42 immediately to the east. And then, of course, we have the city water plant and wastewater plant that was constructed as part of MUD 42. We now own and maintain those facilities. So that, if they come into the city limits, that's what, of course, makes the most sense. There would probably need to be some expansion to the water plant. But we, you know, we haven't gotten into the nuts and bolts of it yet. But it's, it's not, this is the closest, closest utilities that have ever been to this site.
Yeah.
As of right now, we've got, you know, basically, for all intents and purposes, a regional water plant and wastewater plant on the west side of 288. They're on the west side of 288. So it's very, very close.
Immediately south of this location, is that our ETJ or someone else's across Highway 6?
Immediately to the south is MUD 42 as well.
So that's other opportunities down the line for, if this goes in, I'm just saying, that's somebody that's going to want to look there to do something also. So it's just enhancing all, all of that area. So everything's to County Road 48? Is that along Highway 6?
It looks like MUD 42 goes all the way to 48, yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, their property stops just short of, of, excuse me, of County Road 48 because MUD 42 has a?
I'm just talking about the ETJ, though, is on both sides of Highway 6 down to County Road?
No, sir. No, ETJ is just on the north side.
Just on the north?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'd say I'm very excited. I'd love to go on number one, thank you. This is, this is a really nice presentation, and I appreciate it. And I'll echo what Mayor Bonner and the, Councilman Bonner and the mayor said, that we're really going to be cautious on how to work out the, the funding. You know, we've, I think some, some of our past deals, we've, we've sold the farm. And we got to be sure that, we look for the best interest of the city as well, because every penny means as much to us as it does to y'all. So, but this is a great presentation. We're very excited. And I'm really blown away because I don't think either one of you have any gray hair.
I'm working on it.
You're very, very young and presenting this fantastic group of people that y'all have gathered together. And it's quite impressive that y'all have this kind of connection. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If I, if I may just comment real quick, because Councilman Bonner, Bonner said something too, and you, you harped on it a little bit too, is the, being careful about what the city commits to. It has to be a win-win. And what we did in Magnolia is, is we, we had to re, we had to re-engage the, the thought process of, we are incentivized to bring sales tax dollars, right? We do not receive any reimbursements unless we bring the sales tax dollars. So once that's fully understood, and we can modify and update this presentation to answer questions in a, in a day or so. So I just want to make sure that?
We'll create them and how we structure the pay, the payback to where, you know, it works. So we'll collaborate with you guys. And we're confident we can create a win-win. The last thing we want to do is come into a city and then, and look back and?
You basically say, BCS, we like what you're, you're planning to do here. We're, we're team players. We're going to work together so long as you guys produce, you know? And if we don't produce, we don't, we don't reap the benefits of reimbursements.
And I like for an, an arrangement, a working relationship that makes not only us want to further have development with your company, but y'all to have further development with the city. And the only way we can do that is to actually use the word as it's meant, partner together.
Right.
So that's why I'm, I'm anxious about this.
Spot on, Councilman. Dan, Joes, we are at time here. What would be the next steps? It seems like there's a general consensus. Council likes this, wants to continue the conversation. What would we be looking at for, for next steps?
Well, I guess, what, what is your, your timeline like? You haven't?
Yesterday.
You, you haven't closed on the property yet, I presume? So you have a feasibility period?
Yes.
So, so we need to keep our foot on the gas, I guess, is the?
That would be great. Because we're, I mean, we're spending money this, you know, in terms of all of the due diligence to try to get to answers. We don't have a lot of time.
Sure.
You guys probably know the seller a little bit. And we've got a good working relationship. But we can just get to a high level. Hey, we're kind of seeing eye to eye, and that gives us enough confidence to take the?
The major bullet points, Dan, if I'm, from recollection, would be MUD 47, Aleah Vincent, Vincent, with ABHR is the MUD attorney. Jared is the MUD engineer. We're all working together. They're looking for a, a blessing of sorts from the city to say, yeah, we're willing to, to explore this. We, we're open to the annexation. We're open to evaluating the current water service agreement, the current sanitary sewer service agreement, how those amendments would look to incorporate our project. It's really just the authorization to proceed with evaluating those things is the big one. And then, at the same time, we're going to be working through the, the drainage analysis with Beazer, really honing in on, on the actual costs associated with, with drainage. And these numbers could change. And I think they could even go, I mean, I expect them to go up. If we're able to accomplish what we can accomplish with Beazer on a regional scale.
From a sales tax that the revenue?
Because if we can get more land usable on this site by partnering with Beazer, like we're going to partner with you, then we'll have more AV, we're going to have more sales tax. I'm, I'm, I'm long-winded. Forgive me. So those are the items, really, just authorization to proceed and the evaluation.
Mayor, I guess to answer your question, so it sounds like we, we need to huddle back up again and kind of come up with a timeline and what, you know, what, what is going to be the, the process? You know, what do we need to do first as far as, you know, the different, various different agreements, the, the annexation and all that kind of good stuff?
Okay. Councilwoman Sarmiento has a few quick questions?
Yes.
Of course, quick. Thank you, guys, for an amazing presentation. And obviously, we sit here and we get a lot of presentations. Some people are prepared. Some people are highly prepared. Sometimes it makes sense. Sometimes it doesn't. I'm looking for more about what your experience has been with Mont Belvieu, Orange, Magnolia. Give me a story quickly, sorry to say that, but of what, what did you guys go through to get it to where it's at now? And what did that time like, look like realistically? So our citizens who are watching this, don't look at you guys as just salespeople coming in, trying to make a big buck and, and then bail. I, I want to know, like, how difficult was it? What did you guys do to make it work? And then how are they thriving right now?
Yeah. So, well, the nearest example would be Montgomery. But we, that, the, we're doing an Academy anchored shopping center. It hasn't been built yet, so there's not a, how are they thriving today? But it was a four-month process of sitting down like we are right now and explaining the vision and getting everyone aware of what the plan was, to then getting a four, $4 million reimbursement just to get an Academy. Because the Academy deal as it sits is just not a very attractive deal from, from an investment standpoint. And the city really wanted Academy. And they wanted Academy over a couple of the other, other users we were talking to. So it really was a sitting down, showing the math. I mean, at the end of the day, the math speaks for itself. As Ryan mentioned, we as the developer are taking on all the upfront costs. We're not asking for the city to participate in the investment. We're going to come in and put our money in. And then we're asking for a rebate or a reimbursement of a portion of the sales tax and out-of-lorm tax that's getting created through that development. So if we don't, if we don't execute, if we don't build and bring the sales tax that we're promising, we don't get reimbursed. So the risk really lies on, on us.
That's mean, it's just business, right? You got to make the business decisions?
It's a similar, it's a similar situation. We're, we're extending public right-of-way.
Okay.
Widening, extending to accommodate a number of different developments and parcels to our north.
Okay.
We're extending sanitary. We've got some water line work. You know, these are things that, if, if you just have one piece of land and you want to just tie into utilities, it's not that. You know, we've got public infrastructure. And when, when we have public infrastructure, the deal just doesn't work. And we go to the city and say, how, how can we work together?
We did a smaller development in Orange, Texas. And I'd love to send you, if, if it's worth it, send you contact. Send you the mayor of Montgomery's number and send you the head of the EDC for Orange. So we ended up developing, redeveloping the main entrance into Orange, 16th Street and I-10. So it's the last exit in Texas. And it had, it had just become kind of old and old houses. And we assembled 15 different tracks. And we ended up doing, there was a Chick-fil-A and a Starbucks done right prior to us. And then we added on with a Whataburger, a Whitewater Car Wash, and a Take Five. And then we're, we just bought another site. We're doing a Seven Brew Coffee.
And these are, these are built, these are established businesses that are running and producing sales tax revenue as they stand today?
Yep.
Okay. That's kind of what I'm looking for is, is the experience. Like, where have we done this? What we're offering you? And let's see the fruit of that, like the wins that they have for that. And, and be able to, to be inspired by, hey, we already did this here. Another thing that's inspiring here is, is me and Councilmember Robby Robinson were discussing is, there's certain brands here that we would love here that I know our community would love. And they're nice to see here, but we've also experienced with other developers that they're not always inclined to really, truly bring them here. So maybe at another time, whenever we get to meet with you, or maybe through email, you can share with us the real, the realistic expectations and what it would look like? What would we need to provide? What does the feasibility study need to show in order to bring something like a Cinemark Cinema and not have an Academy three miles down from the other Academy that's down the road? And, and stuff like that. Because a lot of developers show us brands and franchises that are right down the street. So they look nice, but are they realistic? So that's, that's more from where I'm coming from. So I would love to get that information from you guys.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You're kind of already on top of it, though. So Cinemark is high-level interested. And at the end of the day, it comes down to, you know, yeah, spacing. So it is too early for Academy. Sienna's opened up slow. But there's a Cinemark right over there, too.
Yeah, there is. It is now, but after like 10 years.
But they're interested.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, to Jack's credit, entirely his credit, there isn't anybody on the site plan that he's not directly talking to.
Okay.
So I've been in the retail space.
Or knows if they're going to be interested or not.
Great.
So if, if time is money, he's, he's dedicating his time and extreme efforts into being as efficient as?
Time is money, and it's a currency we don't get back.
Yeah, because we also need to know, our lenders? Yeah, because we also need to know, our lenders, our investors, they all need to know.
Right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Portillo's also, just going to name drop the Portillo's. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. We look forward to the continued discussions.
Thank y'all.
Sorry, one more question.
I just had one, I mean, she already touched on it, but when I saw the Cinemark under the example, I just wanted to know if there was any actual discussion that had been had or any type of outreach with Cinemark?
There is.
Just because I think, like, one of the main things that I ran on was bringing more entertainment options to Mamvel. And where we're positioned, you know, we have Iowa Colony close by, then yes, Missouri City has the Fort Bend Shopping Center that has a Cinemark there, but it still takes me like 22 minutes to get there. And a lot of times I'll either go to, the point is, is that we need a movie theater. So-
Well, now is the point I was making on the spacing. The site is very well positioned in terms of spacing from Pearland and Sienna.
Right.
And as the density gets more and more, as there's more, as there's more density, so the Cinemark reached out to us. People know we have this site. It's a highly sought-after site. So, we're going to make sure to cultivate it and-
We'll put it as public knowledge now.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is on video or not.
We can't, that's the problem too, is we start showing pretty pictures and then it gets out on Facebook walls, then that, because nothing's done yet, so.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank y'all.
Drive home safe. No, you're good. Appreciate it. All right, council, let's, let's take a, just a six-minute recess here until 6:15 PM and then we'll step into the meeting. How does that sound?
Great.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Everyone, we will officially call this Manville City Council meeting to order here at 6:19 PM. We do have all of our council members that are present here tonight, but we appreciate the patience, everyone, while we wrapped up the workshop and took a quick recess. So we will go ahead and with seven of seven members present, jump into the invocation. And tonight, Councilman Bonner is going to lead us in the invocation. Councilman, if you can unmute yourself and then the floor is yours.
Thank you. Would you please join me? Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to meet tonight. Thank you for the many, many blessings of the day. Thank you for being with us at all times in this growing city that we we all meet here to discuss issues. Help us to have open minds, open ears, so that we can listen and make judgments that would be in your honor and in our citizens' honor. Go with us throughout the coming days. Help all of the people across our nation, Lord, that have have been subject to trying times with weather issues, with all the social issues that go on. Help to strengthen those that have have been affected. Help to bring us all together as one great nation under God. In your name we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. We will go to the inspirational reading next, which is going to be Councilwoman Sarmiento. Councilwoman.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here today. And for those that are watching, thank you for participating in our city, city things that we have going on. On Friday night, I realized that I was going to be doing the inspirational reading, and it's no secret that there's been some tensions going on on social media within the city, outside of the city, and I've been struggling with that. So I started writing, started putting things to paper, and started really challenging myself to think about things in a different perspective. And so here's what I came up with. And it says, "In moments of challenge and tension, leadership is tested, not by how loudly we speak, but by how deeply we listen." President Abraham Lincoln, one of my favorites, said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." I believe that wholeheartedly. He wasn't just offering political advice. He was quoting Jesus in Mark 325. And that message is as relevant today as it was then. Our strength as a community isn't found in our sameness, but in our willingness to come together despite our differences. Tensions have been high. Many questions have been asked. But if we are truly to move forward, we must remember this. Leadership means stepping up, especially when things are hard. We lean in. President Truman once said, "The buck stops here with us." As leaders, we don't just own the wins. We take the responsibility when things fall short, not to carry blame, but to carry accountability. That takes courage. And I believe that the leadership we have here is courageous. That means listening before speaking. It's learning before judging, and it's seeking wisdom to those closest to the work. Walt Disney modeled this beautifully. You guys know I love Disney. I study it. I teach it. So I had to, I was pondering this, and I thought, let me put this in here. Walt Disney modeled this beautifully. Despite being the visionary behind one of the greatest creative empires, he made it a point to walk the grounds, talk to the custodians, ride the rides, and ask the cast members, the people on the front lines, what they thought. He believed leadership wasn't about being the smartest in the room, but about learning from those living the experience every day. He empowered others to grow. And because of that, Disney didn't build just an empire. He built a culture. We have the same opportunity here in our city. Let us not be divided, but united in seeking understanding. Let's be quick to listen, slow to speak, and even slower to cast blame. Because leadership is not a stage, it's a service. And if we are to serve the city and our community well, we must lead with humility, which is easier said than done, stand with courage, and work always together. Because at the end of the day, community involvement should never be about fueling conflict, but it should be about building bridges. I continue to hope that we are rooted in this desire to seek solutions and not spotlight problems, to bring clarity, to dim chaos, to unify, to not divide. The way we respond as leaders, as neighbors, and as a community sets the tone for the future of our city, for our children and for our community. And if we respond with grace, with truth, and with the commitment to do what's right, then even in the middle of all the tension, we will grow stronger. Let us choose unity. Let us choose solutions. And let us always choose what is best, not only for today, but for the future of the community we all love. Manville, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If you can, please stand and join me in saying the pledges. First to the U.S. flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag, honor.
To the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. We next have a presentation for staff tenure. And I want to turn this first one over to Mr. Chad Dumont. Chad?
Mayor's staff, twice in one eating. Tonight, I have the privilege of giving a five-year service award to Ms. Brianna Bobb. Bree, as we all know her, started with the city in August of 2020. She went through a little thing, and at the time, if we all remember, called COVID. So in the courts department, as a deputy clerk, they had to help redefine how we do dockets, how we interact with citizens, and getting everything across. She excelled in her job duties, and in 2022, was given the title as juvenile case manager. Now, at that time, she was given the task of helping create our teen court. Bree went to schools, talked to students. She did research. She helped, along with the court administrator, Megan, develop this program. And by 2024, they had developed a state championship. And if the state had actually had a competition in '23, they probably wouldn't want it there as well. In '24, she had an opportunity, and she joined the personnel team. That's where I stepped in. So for the past year, I've had a chance to watch somebody grow. I've had a chance to watch one of our future leaders take their steps and develop. So I'm very proud tonight to introduce Bree Bobb and congratulate her for her five-year service. Bree?
She's a rock star.
Congratulations, Bree. Got to have you say a few words here.
Thank you.
And in the words of Councilwoman Sarmiento, I heard her say that you're a rock star. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I just wrote a little something so I could keep on track. But I wanted to take a moment to express how truly proud and blessed I am to work for the city and to be a part of it. Like Chad said, I started in the court and got to see the birth of the teen court program along with Megan, and watched it blossom and be able to touch the lives of young people here in this community. They're amazing, if you haven't seen them yet. And then also through that process, grow and expand my role here. And that really came from many different directors here, giving me advice and talking me through. I knew I wanted to stay at the city. And so I want to thank Chad, who supports me, not just in my day to day, but with my education and anything that I want to do to kind of expand how I get to serve our wonderful staff here. And I also want to thank Dan, because you really pour into the staff. And I've seen you, you have an open door. You support new ideas. You make it easy for people to come and know that what they're doing is meaningful. So I'm really thankful for that. And I'm excited to see what's ahead and be a part of a city that invests in its people. So thank you all, too. Thank you.
Congratulations, Bree. So, Council, we next have a tenure recognition for our very own city manager, Dan Johnson, celebrating five years. What we'll do here is I'll read off something that staff actually put together for you, Dan. And then we'll let you say a few words, and then council will go up to the front for the presentation. You know, our staff is very creative. Tammy, everybody is very, very creative, the fund committee. And they thought, you know what? Dan's a musician, so let's maybe do a song for him. But then, most likely, they thought, we're not going to have the mayor sing it because he has a terrible singing voice. So they actually wrote you, they actually wrote you a poem instead. And so this is a five-years of service for Dan Johnson poem. That is from city staff specifically to you, Dan. "In 2008, he first walked through the door, an engineer with vision, ready to do more. Blueprints in hand, steady and precise. From contracts begun, he helped the city rise. Five years on staff, yet his roots run deep. From infrastructure to policy, commitments he keeps. A thoughtful presence, calm and composed, leading with focus where expertise shows. Manager Dan, a leader with purpose and drive, helping the city not just function, but thrive. With a steady hand and a practiced skill, he turns bold ideas into action and will. Recognized by many for his distinct style with well-timed quotes and a trademark smile. Long hair, full beard, some say divine, but it's management, not miracles, most of the time. Alongside our mayor, both Dans in stride, a double Dan duo," this is my first time reading it, "led by purpose and pride. Not just a manager, but a steadfast guide with vision and heart that never subside. Manville moves forward under his care with vision, precision, and leadership rare. Here's to the years and many more still. Manville's steady heartbeat guided by skill. Manager Dan with vision and grace, you've helped our city find its place. With every step and choice you make, a stronger Manville is in your wake." Congratulations, Dan.
That was good.
And this is, great job, Tammy.
I like the divine part.
So Dan, if you want to say a few words, then we'll join you in the front here for a photo.
Oh, goodness. Thank you. That was very, very thoughtful. Goodness. I did not know you were going to do that. So yes, 2008, I guess technically, I mean, go back even further than that. I think it was 2002, I want to say, where Mayor Martin and I took a floodplain management course, a 40-hour course at that in Sugar Land. I did not, honestly, I didn't know where Manville was at that time. And I'm sitting at the at the desk, you know, learning how to read maps, you know, with the mayor of Manville. So whoever thought, obviously, he knew, the Lord knew. But it's just been such a great journey. And, you know, when I had the company, our our sort of vision statement was Colossians 323, doing everything as if you're working for the Lord, not for man. And so that's still my my guiding light, that if we just, we just keep our focus on the Lord, and then the rest will work itself out. So I'm just so blessed, so very blessed to have an amazing, amazing staff, amazing team. I really, I feel like I'm here to support them. And, you know, when you look at this crazy organizational structure, the seven of y'all, and then the seven directors, endless, endless set. So the one common denominator is me. So it'll be very obvious if this doesn't work well, right? Because you got this sort of one, one, one person in the middle. So I'm just really blessed and just thank you all.
That was good.
Thank you, Dan. Council, you want to join us in the front here?
Okay, okey dokey. I want to know if ChatGPT is an employee and he wrote that also.
It's everyone's paper secretary.
Bree left by congratulations, Bree. And Dan, thank you for all that you do. Next, we will move on to staff presentations. Our first presentation tonight is an animal control update by our Director of Public Safety. Chief, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council. We're in the final stages of completing the internal investigation regarding the death of a French Bulldog that occurred while in custody of the Manville Animal Control on May 16, 2025. Please note that this, as a summary, reflects the information currently available. I have not yet reviewed the final investigative report. The investigator's still typing that up and preparing that to turn over to me, hopefully within the next couple of days. During the course of this review, we identified procedural lapses and areas where improvement is necessary. I'd also like to address the initial statement that was released in early July. That communication was based on the best information available to me at the time. As within any ongoing investigation, facts can evolve as more details are gathered and additional individuals are interviewed. The intent of the original statement was not to mislead or deflect responsibility, and I accept full accountability for the information that was released at the time. A summary of our findings so far. The investigation revealed that standard protocols were not followed and critical information was not communicated, which may have contributed to this unfortunate outcome. Since the incident, we have reviewed and updated our procedures and implemented additional training. Our goal is to ensure this does not happen again and to provide a safer environment for our animals in our care. Timeline of the events that took place. On May 16, 2025, 12:20 PM, officers were dispatched to the Rodeo Palm subdivision after receiving a report that two dogs had entered a backyard. The reporting individual was later identified as the actual owner of the animals. This individual has since moved, and attempts to contact them for an interview were unsuccessful. Shortly after that, a Manville police officer responded, took custody of the dogs, and transported them to the department's animal shelter. The animals were placed in a clean kennel with food and water, which has been confirmed by additional officers. Some procedural oversight, the officer failed to complete the required intake documentation and did not scan the animals for microchips. It was later discovered that the microchip scanner had been removed from patrol area and placed in an animal control officer's vehicle. A replacement scanner was ordered and placed in the back of the back in the patrol room as of June 6 of 2025. Shift change oversight, the animal shelter was not inspected at shift change as required by protocol. May 16, 2025, communication staff, this is the day the animals were impounded, communication staff took photos of the animals and sent them to an off-duty animal control officer. This information was not passed to the on-call animal control officer. May 17, 2025, 2:50 AM, during a routine shelter check, officers discovered one of the animals had died. May 16, 2025, at 3 AM, the patrol sergeant on duty notified animal control officer Sherman and Bernard, as well as Captain McLean of the deceased animal via email. May 19, 2025, I was informed of the incident by animal control officer Sherman via email. At that time, I was told animal control had not been notified of the impoundment on May 16. A directive was issued to all PD staff requiring that the on-call ACO be notified whenever animals were impounded outside of regular hours. Although the animal control was not, was notified, the animals were in the shelter by Saturday, May 17. No action was taken to check on or remove the animals until Monday, May 19, by the on-call animal control officer. On May 19, 2025, animal control officers arrived for duty, and during their view of the kennel impound sheets, noted that there was no intake sheet present for the Bulldogs. ACO Bernard subsequently completed an intake sheet after scanning the dog for a microchip. ACO Bernard wrote the name of the responding officer listed on the signature line as the intake officer. Microchip oversight, the deceased animal was not scanned for the microchip after death, again, due to the scanner being, not scanner being unavailable in the patrol area. Again, a replacement scanner is now permanently stationed in the patrol room. Corrective actions that we have taken thus far, internal procedures and documentation requirements have been reviewed and revised where necessary, appropriate action taken in accordance with the City of Manville Personnel Policy Manual. Communication protocols were updated to ensure that on-call ACOs are properly and promptly notified. Oversight of the Animal Control Division has been restructured, including changes to supervisory responsibilities. A portable cooling unit has been acquired, or is being acquired, for the use in both the current and future shelter facilities to ensure proper temperature control. I'd like to make some clarification of legal responsibilities. I'd like to also clarify several points raised by community members during recent public meetings. First, the Animal Control Authority under Section 822 of the Texas Health and Safety Code, the city's Animal Control Authority resides in the Animal Control Division, which operates under the Police Department. Microchip, microchip scanning requirements, Section 823.004 of the Texas Health and Safety Code, microchip scan required is specifically, it says, "As soon as practical, after an animal is placed in custody of an animal shelter or a releasing agency as defined by Section 828.001, including an animal rescue organization, a shelter agency, or organization shall scan the animal to determine whether a microchip, microchip is implanted in the animal. Contrary to some statements made, the law does not require immediate scanning at the time of impound." I further, I want to define what a releasing agency is, because it is not in the, in that section. It's per Section 828.001 of the Health and Safety Code. A releasing agency includes animal shelters and humane organizations, but does not include private individuals who occasionally shelter animals. Care requirements under Section 821.002 mandates that impound animals be provided with adequate food and water. This requirement was met. The animal was housed in a clean kennel and provided with food and water upon intake. On the animal welfare, the investigation found no evidence of cruelty or inhumane treatment toward the French Bulldog or the other animals in the shelter's care at that time. In conclusion, we recognize the seriousness of the incident and remain committed to transparency, accountability, and continuous improvement in our animal control operations. We appreciate the community's support as we work to ensure the highest standard of care for the animals in our custody.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that overview and the transparency. Council, any comments and/or questions? Hearing none. Dan, Chief, with the conclusion of this investigation happening, and the captain writing up the investigation at our next council meeting, I find it prudent to have an executive session. That way, we can discuss the results of that investigation and work and a partnership with you, Chief, on the results of that investigation. All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, we will now go to staff presentations on the Phase Three Road Project update by our Director of Public Works, matching nicely with our city manager tonight. How you doing, Robbie?
Pretty good. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just want to give you an update on some preliminary numbers that we have for Phase Three, the sidewalk signals and drainage. So right now, we're looking at, for the total for sidewalks would be 1.1 million. That would include the Lewis Lane sidewalk, the large avenue sidewalk, Palmetto sidewalk, Charlotte sidewalk, and Tangiersly. And then we got for traffic improvements, we have the left turn lane, Newport Lake Estates. We're looking at $300,000. For the traffic signal at Crowe and Rodeo Drive, we're looking at $500,000. And then for the traffic signal at FM 1128 in Del Bello would be $500,000 as well. As far as the street extensions go, we're looking at Peachtree Street Asphalt Extension at $200,000. Large Avenue Extension over to C1 would be $280,000, with $500,000 projected to build a bridge over C1. And then we got Cannon Street from McCord to Palmetto, we're looking at $420,000. And then the Bello Boulevard, Paula Boulevard to Paula Drive, we're looking at $1 million, 1.4 million. And the Bello, the Bello Boulevard, Paula Drive to the Bello Road, we're looking at $300,000. And then the Larry Extension to the Chocolate Bayou Road, we're looking at $820,000, which would be $4 million. So with a total of Phase Three coming out to be $6.4 million.
All right. Thank you, Robbie, for that overview. Manager Dan?
Yes, if I could just put a, add a little, I guess, context here. So if you recall, and especially for our new council members, a certificate of obligation and the amount of $10 million was added on to the $40 million CO for the water reclamation facility, the wastewater treatment plant. So of those $10 million, Council at the time said, "We would like to see this $10 million go towards street, sidewalk, signals, drainage projects," with the major emphasis on those projects that just didn't, did not have any, any other financial mechanism. So we've gone through a Phase One, which was to convert all of the gravel roads to asphalt. The last one, the last one of those started actually under construction today, right, Robbie?
Yes.
Belcher?
Yes.
So that was Phase One. Phase Two was using our, our street maintenance program. We had a third party come through and literally drive all of our asphalt streets to, to come up with an index on which roads needed, needed the most attention. And so some of those are just point repairs. Some of those are replacements. Some of those are reclaiming whatnot. So between Phase One and Phase Two, both of those are still estimated at about $1.7 million each. Phase One is not complete, but nor is Phase Two. But so we, we believe if they, if those stay on budget, we'll have about 6.6 million left. So we're calling this Phase Three. It's just sort of the, the next phase. So, gosh, a couple of months ago, we polled council on some ideas, and y'all gave feedback, and we really helped us sort of prioritize things. So I think we started off with almost 30 different projects. If we prioritize those down to these top 15, right now, it's looking like we could still do all 15 of these projects for, for about 6.4 million. So that's, you know, without a lot of contingency, but that's within the 6.6 that is left over, if you wanted to. Now, a couple of caveats on, on these. So project number eight, for instance, the traffic signal at 1128 in Del Bello, just as of today, we actually had our, our monthly meeting with TechDOT and kind of asked them where, that's, that's a TechDOT road, of course. So we had brought to their attention several months ago, some concerns, you know, as far as we've all been on there on 1128, when especially, you know, during big traffic times where Del Bello comes in, it's very dangerous. Of course, we've all seen accidents there. So we So we asked them to look into that intersection and see what kind of improvements could be made. We assume it to be a signal, of course. I don't know what else you could do. There's way too much traffic for, you know, to contemplate a three-way stop at that, most likely. But anyway, we asked TechDOT, "Hey, it's your road, how can, how can that be improved?" So they have begun the, the, the actual traffic study, which is good. And I just posed the question today, actually, to them, "It's, it's your right-of-way, it's your study," which that's great that they're paying for it. If, if it comes back and it says that it's warranted that a signal should go there, how long, you know, because they don't have this project sort of on the radar, how long would that be before we could actually get the signal there? It, it could be several years, quite frankly, until they are able to, to put money towards that particular signal. So this is, it has a placeholder here. If, if it comes back and it's warranted, I ask the question, if we partnered with that, with that effort, would that speed it up? Absolutely, of course it would. So I, I don't anticipate the entire half a million dollars, that's the entire, that's design and, and everything, but what I've got in there right now is just if it was all on our shoulders, if we had to go do it all by ourselves, which is not the case. But anyways, it's conservative is, is the moral to that story. Another one I want to bring to your attention, number 13, and, yeah, number 13 specifically. So if, if you've driven through on Pollard, you drive up through Blue Water Lakes, then you come into Valencia, and then if you take a left on Del Bello, you're going to come out at the Toyota dealership. If, if you wanted to take a right, you, you really can't, of course, because that road's not constructed yet. By the same token, if you came up Pollard Drive, that road just sort of, kind of, just starts playing out once, once it gets up to what'll be the future of Del Bello Lane. So if, if you remember, if you recall, Joe's, when was that, two years ago, year and a half ago? There, there's a individual homeowner building on the Del Bello right-of-way, and Council waived the right-of-way dedication at that time. So the, the request has come in, can, can we build from Pollard to Pollard? I know that sounds odd, but from Pollard Boulevard to Pollard Drive? We can, but we would have to buy it, we would have to acquire the right-of-way first. Obviously, it's possible, some people may donate their 60-foot of right-of-way on each side because it's a major thoroughfare. But if not, that's why we put, or we put in there plus right-of-way acquisition. So that could be, you know, I think there are 13 property owners, as near as we can tell, looking at GIS. So we would have to get, you know, our land agent involved in, in looking to acquire this. So that's not an easy project, but it's, it's got a placeholder on here, if that's something that y'all want to pursue. The rest, I think, speak for themselves, but I just wanted to kind of highlight those two, Mayor, but we can jump in to any questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll kick us off here and then I want to turn it over to Councilwoman Sarmiento, because you had some questions and comments at the last meeting here, too, about this. A few questions first and then some comments. For, for the sidewalks, I'm going to assume, Robbie, that we'll be looking to do drainage improvements along with the installation of the sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we explored whether or not any of these are school-zone routes or safe routes to school-eligible, which would open up grant, grant funding for us?
So, so we need to explore that option. But I, I do believe it should qualify because everything that I do have listed here is kind of in the vicinity of a school, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be great, that, that might unlock a lot of additional money, or at least matching, that would save us money, because one of the things that would be good for us to consider for sidewalks, too, I know there's gaps in the sidewalks in Rodeo Palms that were neglected in years past, but I think filling in those gaps is very important. So if we can find money in the budget to, from this money, to fill in those gaps in the sidewalk, that would be extremely helpful. A question about the turn lane for Newport. I know we're proactively moving forward with the traffic light at Croy and Rodeo Drive. What are we looking at timeline-wise for the left turn lane into Newport?
That would be, I would actually look at my emails and get freshened up on that. I don't want to give you no false data, nothing like that.
Okay. If we can get Manager Dan an update on that item?
I'll, I'll give you, it'll just be momentarily, but if y'all keep going, I'll look for it, Mayor.
Sounds good. For the street extensions, have any traffic modeling assumptions been made with these about the traffic impact that this would produce for existing neighborhoods and homes?
Not really. We just actually just kind of got prices on constructing the road and everything, so.
Okay. With some of these roads looking at, I, I like the approach of doing Canaan from McCoy to Wilson, not necessarily sold on extending it all the way through to Palmetto at this town, at this time. For the Large Avenue Bridge, the extension there and the bridge, I would say hold off on that until we know what sort of commercial development is going to happen there, and at that point, that might trickle some, trigger something, but maybe we, we hold on that and leave that as just a placeholder for now.
Got you.
I love the Lyra extension, having that in there. I think that's a, a very smart thing to, to add in. One of the things that I, I didn't see in this list, Robbie, is the, the redoing of Oilfield and also completing the portion that's still gravel. Do we have a plan in place for that?
Yeah, so actually, we're still, still trying to work with the 18-wheeler company out there, because right now, man, they're actually just tearing that road up. So we're still trying to coordinate between 18-wheeler company and trying to see if they have heavy oil permits and stuff like that.
Okay. So we're waiting, kind of reading in between the lines of what you're saying, we're waiting until we figure out what the 18-wheeler company is going to do before we make any additional needs.
Yeah, because we actually went out there, man, we're kind of getting the runarounds on it, so we're trying to find out the, the main point of contact out there, because we're always getting pointed in a different direction out there. So we're trying to figure out who's actually doing it, who's actually responsible for it.
Okay.
Yeah, because right now, if we go out there and say, "Put some asphalt on the ground again," I mean, the same thing is going to happen, it's just going to get torn up.
And I know there's been a lot of questions about Oilfield, that, that was one of the first roads that we really paved ourselves, and it's a learning opportunity. I'm, I'm hoping that we've learned from that experience and some recent experiences, and we're, we're growing and getting better each, each and every day.
Yes, sir.
All right. Louis, just for the, the public's sake, I know I've gotten an update on this, I've asked about it, but for council to know as well, can you share with us how things are looking at for redoing, Louis?
Yeah, so we're actually working with a, a new engineer to try to get a sidewalk plan, you know, to mitigate the drainage and, and everything for the sidewalk. And then we're going to do the reclaim and overlay on the road as well at the same time. So we're trying to coordinate that with one contractor so we can get it all done at one time, because it's going to be kind of hard to go in and do the sidewalk and then come back and do the road, or do the road and then come back and do the sidewalk. So trying, trying to get those coordinated at the same time.
That makes sense. And what's the timeline for that, Robbie?
Still trying to get the plans.
Yeah, and I think we targeted, the goal would be by the end of this year.
By the end of this calendar year, yes, sir.
Okay. Taking a look here, Manager Dan, to your point about number 13, I would prefer to see us not do anything with that at this time, you know, considering that the property owners were not willing to dedicate right-of-way, they preferred an easement at that time, and they made that request. That's really only serving one property owner right now. There's commercial property that's there. When you're looking at that price tag, that can do a lot of other good, knowing that there's some commercial property that might start to extend it further to the east. I also know the residents that are on, I think it's Pollard Drive, do not want to see that opened up because it'll become a cut-through for them. So looking at the price tag of almost $1.5 million, that's a, that's a heavy pill to swallow right now. That's my personal thoughts. I like that you guys have put it on there, it's, it's a good thing to think about. The last question that I have is, a lot of this work, I'm assuming because this is new sidewalks, you know, traffic signals, road extensions, those aren't necessarily things that we would do ourselves or in-house. We would contract that out. So while we're finishing up Belcher, we can probably start moving on some of these, is that correct?
Mainly the Phase 2 projects is, is the ones that, that we're trying to tackle in-house.
Okay. So what would we be, if we, you know, let's say within the next two weeks to a month, we say, "All right, this list is finalized, let's go." Do we have timelines for this, or what, what are our thoughts there? Because knowing that we can, you guys have a lot of other things that you're doing in Public Works.
Right.
Because we're outsourcing these, this would be another capital project to manage, too.
Sure.
What are we, what are we looking at project plan-wise?
So the, the traffic signal project, you know, the, the council just approved at the last meeting, so that one is, we're almost done with a contract on it. So that one's proceeding in earnest for Croy, County Route 58, and Rodeo Drive. I have a, a proposal to do the left turn lane. We've had that since last year when we first kind of talked about this project, or we just didn't have the funding for it. But that one, I did look up, Mayor, it's, it's about nine months from when we signed the contract to actually having the left turn bay, is what they're asking. So it should be no more than that. But anyway, so, so a lot of those projects can, can move parallel for, for sure. Like Robbie said, we're, we're trying to get somebody, well, somebody that understands the nuances of sidewalks and open ditches and how do those two, you know, how do those two live together? And if we have to convert, which it's, it's, you know, it's, it's done, you just have to have the engineering behind it. If, if the answer is to put a pipe or a series of pipes where the open ditch is, then that's what needs to be done. If we need to have inlets, then that's what we need to do, you know. So that part, we're, we're certainly not going to be able to do in-house. I, I don't know that really many of, if any of Phase 3 projects are necessarily done in-house. I think those are all going to be. So right now, hopefully, to answer your question, as far as the timeline, if, if we can, and it doesn't have to be all 15 projects, but if, if you want to prioritize, you know, the top five or something, we're, we're still working in-house. We, we can keep a few of these going, but I think your, your goal, Robbie, it, it was basically Phase 1 was, was last year.
Right.
And we're, we're almost done with that, the last fiscal year, I should say. Phase 2, starting this fiscal year, and then Phase 3, kind of that third year. And Rosie, can you correct me, how long do we have to actually spend the money? It is three years, right? So there you go. So we, we need to have all the projects done within three years of when the, the CO actually got issued.
And when is, when is that, when was the CO issued? I think it was, what, 2024? So spring, spring of '24, I believe, correct? So spring of '27 is when it has to be done. So time to rock and roll, baby.
We're rocking and rolling. So actually, we're finna kick off Phase 2 in the next couple of weeks as well, so.
Well, thank you, Robbie, Dan, for answering all my questions. I know I, I had a few there, I appreciate that. Councilwoman Sarmiento?
Howdy.
Any questions?
Just a couple. That was one of the biggest questions I had, is that on this data sheet, it has quotes and dates, but it's empty. And so I like that we have a hard date, but really, what does it look like, or how realistic can you guys get this back to us with some preliminary dates? Because after this, we get messages, I know I do, from neighbors and friendly, friendly people asking, "I live by this, when is this projected?" So that we have something more tangible to say. Also, I don't know if this is appropriate to bring this up, because I don't think it was supposed to be part of the CO, but the Charlotte through Lakeland, I know we're kind of on hold with that because of some stuff, but what's the priority to, to open that up since hearing Mayor saying he's opposed to Pollard to Pollard, being that that's on the backside of there, and full transparency, I personally don't want that open because I live right by there. But it is on the thoroughfare plan. Some people love it, some people hate it. But I would like to know what, what's the reality of getting that done and maybe us prioritizing that and then figuring out the financial stuff on the backend, or should we wait? What are your thoughts about that?
Sure, that's a great question.
Manager Dan, just one, one clarification.
Yeah.
The Pollard would be that one that's on the, just...
It's on the other side.
The northern portion, but the road right behind Lakeland that goes like Tankersley to Pollard?
That's Dogwood.
Yeah, I would love to see that connected.
That Dogwood would go there, it's not on here, but then we also have Charlotte.
Correct, correct.
And so those two are possibilities, and I know Dogwood's kind of scraggly is the word. Somebody told me the other day, it's a scraggly road. So it's a good description, it's a little scraggly.
That's, that's an engineering term.
Is it?
No.
Oh.
It could be. From this point forward, it shall be.
It shall be scraggly, scraggly road.
Engineering term. So the, the, this inventory of, of streets and, and projects, these are things where we, we really don't have necessarily another, another option. In other words, these are the ones where, if we, if we can get somebody else to pay for it, then we will.
Of course.
And so with Charlotte, if you recall, it was on the preliminary list, and it was agreed, well, if, if, you know, since we're pursuing, obviously, to try and get the, the developer to fulfill the obligations of the development agreement, then that, that's, we, we took them off of this list. If for some reason that doesn't come to fruition, then, then it would, I guess it would have to come back.
Can you remind me what the total cost of doing that on our end would be today, since it didn't get done by the developer as promised?
The, the numbers that we were given from Hillwood, because they, they were looking at constructing it, I want to say it was one, about a million dollars from where Charlotte stops right now to go and build it across C12. So it's about a million dollars until it gets to Valencia, and then from Valencia to Pollard Boulevard, another 2 million, which that's, that's part of their...
That's their part of it, though.
Right. So about, about a million dollars for the construction. So, you know, that's, that's the, the lanes, that's the sidewalks, the waterline extension, all that kind of good stuff, but then also the right-of-way. So that's, that's the other thing, you know, the, the right-of-way acquisition or the right-of-way dedication is what it should be.
So pound for pound, if you would, Pollard to Pollard.
Yep.
Can you share with us the length of that? Like which one would give us more bang for our buck as far as connectivity and, you know, moving traffic? Not that I'm interested in Pollard to Pollard, I'm just, I'm, for perspective sakes, Charlotte versus Pollard to Pollard, because it goes through that, those two neighborhoods in that area.
Yeah, I think at some point that, so, and we're talking about Del Bello Boulevard, so the extension, you know, if, if you were to come out of the Toyota dealership and head east.
Yes.
Going past the city center property, and then right now, all you can do is go south, go, go to the right down Pollard Boulevard. The question is, if, if we could keep going to Pollard Drive, into the, sort of the more established part of Manville, the older part of Manville, I think that makes a lot of sense at some point. Of the two, I think Charlotte makes more sense right now because of all, because of Lakeland and because of Valencia, because of the schools.
And it keeps the traffic in the newer development and not so much in our older development that people absolutely love to keep rural.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that being said, I would say I kind of agree with you, Mayor, not 100%. I still have some stipulations there. You know, I don't always agree with everybody 100%, my husband will tell you that. But, yeah, I kind of agree with you there, and I would really like to see or get an update at least on what's going on with, with Charlotte. Again, personally, I, I object to it, but I do see it's best for the city, and I'm going to get emails from our neighbors, I already know. And then also, if we were to remove this 1.48 million and council or we decided to not move forward with Pollard to Pollard, where would we use those funds and best, get the best bang for our buck?
So we can go back to the, the list that we had from before and see kind of what the next one would bubble up. Candidly, what we didn't have, we didn't really have, we've got drainage projects in that they complement, you know, the sidewalk projects. All of the roads will have drainage associated with them, but we don't have any strictly drainage, like drainage-only projects, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So that could be an option, too, that we could open up, up, up some ideas there. Certainly would, would entertain, you know, any ideas. You asked a question a minute ago, so like the column there on, on quote and date. So what, what we're noticing, you know, all of these projects, you know, require us to go out and, and either, either get quotes or depending on the, the number of dollars we may actually have to go out for sealed bids, but it's, it's, there's, there's a, there's a relationship there that you're building up. So if you keep going to contractors and asking them for, for quotes and proposals at some, and, and then there's no project that comes to fruition, eventually they get, they get burned out and then they stop, you know, wanting to bid, because it, it costs them time and money and effort to put these proposals together. So whenever we, we've got the placeholder, when we get the thumbs up, this is a real project, then we can go in earnest and actually get, like I said, those actual quotes, we get those contractors and, and get something on the calendar. So I just wanted to say, so that's, that's really a placeholder kind of for us, too, that, no, knowing that we, other than the traffic signal at Croy and Rodeo, which that one's, like I said, we're very close to, to, to moving forward with that one and the left turn, both of those can, can, can happen on the engineering side relatively quickly.
Okay, so hearing you say that, looking at these 15 different potential projects, we have sidewalks, traffic improvements, and we have street extensions, and so this is all considered Phase 3. So really, we don't have a plan of action. So could we get an update on this and say, which ones are the placeholders? Or are we going to decide that together so that we know exactly, like, from this list, what's A, B, C, what's the priority? Like, what are we going for?
That, that is the purpose of tonight, absolutely.
Okay.
Tammy, look back through our previous agendas to see what we had done for Phase One and Phase Two, to see if it was an action item, if it was a resolution, or if it was just seven thumbs up. And it was basically seven thumbs up. So really, we're looking for consensus. The Mayor gave us some good input. And if that's the consensus of council, then we can, you know, we just, this is a living, breathing document. This is something for all of us to use, you know, obviously staff and y'all. And get it to Blake and we can, you know, obviously get it up on the socials and everything, too.
So if you get seven thumbs up tonight, what happens next?
Well, then I think we, we update this list.
Okay.
We remove the ones that, that council says, nah, we don't want to spend our 10 million on that. And then we start looking back, like I said, other projects. Okay, well, this frees up, you know, $3 million. Okay, what do we want to do instead? So we'll come, come to y'all with some, some recommendations.
I have, I have, I have a request. I think you guys, back to the sidewalk situation. I know it says Lewis Lane sidewalk, large sidewalk, Charlotte. What do we have to do to get McCoy on here? Because I know that Alvin, here we go again, right, Alvin ISD should have been obligated to build a sidewalk all the way through. However, it's not there. And so what does it look like for us to build that on the other side? We've got water lines going in, there's work happening now. We've got these others here and we just freed up at least a million. So realistically, what does that look like?
So right now, we have applied for a Tech Start's grant program. It's called Transportation Alternatives. And one of the, within the scope of work, one of the segments was McCoy-
Yes.
All the way from where Lakeland starts, its sidewalk, coming all the way to Highway Six. So we've, we've made the application. We did hear that there's a lot of applications already that's come in. So we're just hopeful and we did our best and see if we get awarded, we can kind of speed it up. And there, I think target is like the project to be complete within two years.
Okay, because I do, now I remember us speaking to them when I met with them and them saying, there's money for that because it's where, it's a highway and there's children on that road. What's, I forget what they call it, some fancy-
Safe paths.
Say, what is it?
It's the safe paths to put it in.
Safe paths. Okay, so that's great. So we're waiting on them. Do we know who we need to call to get an answer and push, push it forward?
Representative Jeff Berry.
Oh, great. I'll be calling him after this, Jeff Berry, if he's watching, which I heard he does. Okay, great. Thank you for that information. So if that takes more than two years, what can we do on our end? Because I think safety is more important at the beginning of the day than trying to just wait for someone else to fulfill the responsibility that we have as a city. Sorry to say it.
So my monthly meeting with Alvin ISD last week, and so we talked about this project because, you know, right now, their, their main focus and their, and their most recent bond election was to work on stuff for Alvin High School. And then the next project is, is Manville High School. So they're wanting to do some pretty big improvements there. And the sidewalks is, that's something that's in their scope. So it's really a matter of who can get there first at this point.
Okay.
If, if Alvin ISD can get there first, then that'd be great. If Tech Start Grant, I mean, obviously, they're happy to, for the same reason that we are. If, if there's a grant opportunity that can free up money for other projects, then great. But if it's going to take forever, then we might just have to jump in line and do it.
Okay, and then ideally, what would it look like to have sidewalks where Alvin ISD builds theirs on their side, which is their responsibility, and then we come in and have Tech Start or us partner on the other side? So it's not just like, well, we got one side, you got something. I would really like to see a responsible build out there because this is going to be a school for 20, 30, 40 years. You know, hopefully, they won't be flying on hoverboards and, or they might be in, I don't know, 30 years? Hmm, right? But it's, I think it's important to prioritize our children's safety. And I'm not just saying that for political clout. I think that's, that's the first thing that, you know, we brought to the table when we, when I came here and Abby did as well. Abby's my daughter.
I mean, if you would like to add McCoy, I guess, the east side of the right-of-way, we don't have that as a project right now. So I mean, we could add that if that's the will of council, if you'd like to add McCoy sidewalk on the east side. It's, you know, just like anywhere else, what you're hoping is that as development occurs, they're building their, their portion. So right now, I think the only folks that have built their portion would be the church. I don't, I can't, I can't picture a sidewalk anywhere north, all the way up to, you know, Charlotte or keep going. But we can put that as a project if you'd like to see what-
I'd love to see what council thinks because I think it, it would be our responsibility on at least the residential side.
What we'll do here is at the end of the conversation, we'll kind of run through the items and get thumbs up, thumbs down on each one for what council wants to do there.
Cool, love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go, okay, Councilman Rossi Knox and then Councilman Bonner.
So these are great, but I'm, I have an issue with number 15. I just, I guess my first question is why? Why is that on here?
And where is it?
Because looking at a map, I don't really see a need. I'm just kind of curious why that was put on here. Because that's, that's the second most expensive item.
It is. So it's, it's, there's a, that one we already have right-of-way there. It would, sorry, I'm trying to move my G I S around. Where it connects to Old Chocolate Bayou, let's see. Yeah, so if you project Lyra, which, which runs parallel to Patterson, so, so Lyra from Del Bello Road, past Tammy, then past Spears, if you were to project the line, it, it actually becomes Old Chocolate Bayou Road as it goes out of the city limits. So if you're familiar with, obviously you are, Old Chocolate Bayou, once you pass Patterson, then you take a right. So that's where it would come in, right there at, at that hard 90-degree turn.
Is that where that property's for sale right now?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Right there in the 90.
That used to be Kelton Glasscock's property and they're looking to sell it potentially as operating a commercial business out of there, potentially. I think the reasoning, you know, Councilman Rossi Knox, my reasoning for it is it alleviates some of the traffic that would go and cut through Old Chocolate Bayou. So coming down Pearland, I use it. I take Old Chocolate Bayou all the way to Masters. If I had the ability to not have to take that turn and just to continue to run straight to Del Bello Road, that would be a little bit advantageous, which is where I was coming from.
I think it would make Del Bello Road worse, honestly. I think Del Bello has terrible traffic. That's why we're talking about the line in the first place. I think that if you're, if you're, you're directing everyone that comes down Old Chocolate Bayou, you know, straight down to Del Bello, I mean, those people can't even turn out of their driveways most days. It's so bad. So I just was curious why that's on here. It's, it seemed kind of expensive or something that, I mean, did the people on that road, have they put any kind of an input in?
Not yet, no. It's just another idea. I mean, another, you know, there's, Patterson is the one that's actually on the thoroughfare plan. So anytime we can have a parallel that can help so that all of the traffic isn't on Patterson, all of the traffic's not on Masters, you know, so the idea would be that you'd have Masters, Furnace, Patterson, Lyra, or Chocolate Bayou, whatever the name would, would wind up being. But it's just an idea.
I'm curious if it, how much of it would be on, like, there's quite a bit of bayou there that we'd have to bridge over.
Yes, sir.
That's why it's so expensive.
Yes, sir.
And it's 4,100 feet versus all the 2,100s.
Yeah, the reason why I know this area, because I, I wrote the book, this is a really old home site, this property right here. And some of the oldest pecan trees in Manville are right there. So that's kind of why I was looking at this, kind of, I was just confused as to why we would need this extension and how it would really benefit anyone, especially at that price tag. I mean, you could take that price tag and put it towards probably the entire McCoy sidewalk project or something else. I think there's better use for this. I just don't see how it would really benefit anyone over there. I mean, I mean, I drive this all the time. I, I just, if you're on any of these roads, you just take Crowe to 288. Anyone in this section, they take Chocolate Bayou over. If you want to get to Del Bello, you can take Patterson down. I just don't want to make anything worse on Del Bello. I feel like that's what we would do, honestly.
Excuse me, sir. We can't, we can't have conversations like that from the crowd right now. That would be out of order. But we have public comments coming up and if you would like to submit a public comment, we'll make sure to call your name and give you an opportunity to speak during that time. But we appreciate you being here, sir. Go ahead, Councilman.
I just, I would like for someone to convince me why we should keep that on here.
Joe, there's a question for you because we're talking about a lot of roads and connections of roads. When is our master thoroughfare plan update going to come before us? Are we maybe for some of these items, a little premature, knowing that these people are doing studies and going to be able to answer some of the questions like what the councilman just asked?
That is right. So, so we had the, a discussion a few months back on the major thoroughfare plan. And after that, staff met, gave them input, and they are working on that. At the same time, they've switched gears to the future land use plan aspect of it. So I have a meeting scheduled with the group next week. And August, I think the first PD and Z meeting in August, they'll make a workshop presentation to PD and Z with both the comprehensive plan as well as the major thoroughfare plan component. And originally, we were planning at a September adoption, but it looks like it could be the September, October timeframe when it'll come to y'all for adoption. And then we'll have intermittent presentations as well. So last, I believe there was a presentation where a draft proposal was included at the PD and Z and also at the city council. And after which, y'all gave them input and staff gave them input. They're working on incorporating all of that. So I'm hoping like August, September timeframe, you will see a draft. And then around October time, we'll have a final version for consideration of adoption.
Thank you, Joe. Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, one, one thing on the, on this Lyra property, if they're going to sell this for commercial purposes, wouldn't those people have to put part of the streets in? It's kind of like, we're going to put it in so they can sell the land for commercial or shouldn't it be the other way?
So they, they're going to keep it residential, but they can use 50% of the homes, home site for commercial. So it's going to be bought, from my understanding, it's going to be bought by a commercial company is what they're marketing it towards, keeping it residentially zoned and minimizing their usage because there's technically two homes. So one of the homes would be lived in, the other would be used for a commercial trucking business.
Who owns this?
Right now, this is currently owned by a gentleman named Kelton Glasscock.
But I mean-
And how do we know that he's, he's got personal interest in selling this as commercial and using this?
The, I've had a conversation with the Realtor because I was curious about why he was selling it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's, he's moving.
It's on the market?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they want 2.1 for it, I think.
I would just rather see, if somebody wants to build back there, then I would rather see them absorb some of this cost to get a road to where they want to build versus us spending that kind of money.
And does this, are we looking at this in terms of the thoroughfare plan? Is that kind of what the idea was with this? Are you trying to offset Patterson or what's, what's kind of the angle here?
Somewhat. Yeah, just really, if you turn on the, our G I S and you turn on our zoning, and then it'll leave the, the rights of ways sort of hollow. So where are those extensions? That was really just from a pure standpoint of where do we already own right-of-way and the roads just don't connect? So it was just really that simple. But, but yes, it's certainly, the more parallels that you can have, the better, you know, it is as far as, if you look at old thoroughfare plans, what they had envisioned 20-plus years ago, maybe 25 years ago, was that you'd have large, you'd have Lewis, you'd have Charlotte, you'd have Dogwood, all of these parallel roads, not just from McCoy to Masters, but throughout the city, you know? And of course, the high school's in the way of this one. Church on Masters Road is in the way on, you know, Charlotte just dead ends into it. But Charlotte's on the thoroughfare plan as a parallel forevermore. So if you, if you're not proactive about those, then they, they just go away, quite frankly, the parallels do, so.
Yeah, I'm interested in looking at those more.
Sure.
The Patterson thoroughfare is immoral. It's just terrible, the direction of, of that street. I do not like that. But, you know, if we're looking at this kind of to offset that, it's a more straight shot. So, but this is, this is a tough corner. And my grandparents lived inside that, that curve and they made lifelong friends because people had wrecks and they'd go out and help them, you know? So it's a tough corner as is. I just think bridging over there, spending a million dollars basically and adding pressure onto Del Bello is something to, that everyone appears to take into consideration.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, the east end of Lewis Lane to 1128 to Cemetery, at one time, that was on the list. And then we found more damage than what we originally thought, I believe.
Yes, sir. So it's actually still on the list. So when we had the guy to come out and look at it, it's, it's a lot of oak trees along Lewis Lane and we're projecting it to reclaim like eight to 10 inches. So he's going to come out and make sure that it's not going to affect the trees.
Okay, but that's still on part of Phase Two?
Maybe part of Phase Two, yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. One question I have, and you brought up detention. What if you took everything in street extensions and started looking for buying property on the east side of town for regional detention? Is that an option? Because there are some properties available and we're talking about $4 million here. And we're always talking about fixing drainage on the east side of town. So if we could do that without having to come out of general funds or, or things like that, looking for detention, that might be an opportunity there.
Let's just, Tammy's going to look and Rosie, maybe you can too, just to verify exactly how the C O was written, just to make sure. But, but it's, it's a great question. While we're still talking, maybe we'll have an answer for you in a minute.
Thank you, Councilman, for those questions. Councilman Rossi Knox, thinking about Lyra and what your comments about Patterson, it did make me think, we would have to study out, because you're right, the bayou and some of those trees that are there, we would want to preserve that. I would see it as being the, if we want to preserve Patterson North, not take up the beautiful oak trees that are there and not impact the properties along Patterson North, extending Lyra would be the, in my opinion, the perfect alternative to, to do that, potentially. And this would be interesting to see within the thoroughfare, master thoroughfare plan, if extending Lyra North would actually help alleviate traffic off of Del Bello. How many of the people that take Del Bello are going to turn north compared towards turning south once they get to Masters? I could see viability in that. I also can see the concerns. One question that I had, Dan, as we're looking at the C O, because Councilman Bonner, you were kind of going along the same lines of what I was thinking about. Could we use it to do either land acquisition and/or equipment purchases that would help with drainage or road projects? Because we've been talking about, you know, mowers with extension arms, we've been talking about gradealls and those sorts of things. If we say, you know what, let's pause on these street extensions and let's instead use that money for buying land for, for drainage, but then also securing additional equipment that we've been asking for within Public Works for roads and drainage maintenance, could we do that? Or is the, the C O pretty strict?
We have used it for some, some equipment costs. I know equipment rentals is part of Phase One, right?
Yes, sir.
Materials, of course, striping materials, materials. Rosie, what do you, what do you think about that, straight up equipment, I guess, a capital expenditure for equipment?
It would be in the gray area, I think. And that's something that we would have to check with our bond couns, council.
So council, I think, hearing different, well, let me see, any other council members have any comments?
Yeah.
On which topic?
On which topic, Councilman O'Plager asked.
I do.
I'll kind of break that down here for a second, in a second. I do want to go to the Councilwoman, Sarmiento.
Thank you. I just, I, I'm struggling with why we want to take funds away from our roads when, when we fought so hard for this 10 million to improve roads, sidewalks, et cetera, and then pull from that and say, let's buy equipment. Clearly, it's, it's money that's here that we can say, can we allocate it for somewhere else? We have a huge request on all, all the departments do, but this particular CO that we approved was specifically, my understanding was to improve our, our streets and our sidewalks. So I, I'm not real crazy unless you can sell me on the fact that this is why we're going to pull money from here when we fought so hard for this $10 million for that. And there's still so many, this is just, there's just these sidewalks, there's so much more that we can do with it. So, I mean, it sounds great, but at the same time, I don't, I don't want to lose focus on, on building the infrastructure that we've been talking about for so long that we need. So it's not to challenge that, it's just, I, I want to stay true, true to our, our request to our city and telling our constituents that we're going to develop the infrastructure and we're going to be responsible with it. So that's just, that's just where I'm coming from.
My, my argument to that, councilwoman, would be this, for the street extension portion, this is not improving what we have, but this would be building new. And if we improve what we have, but we don't have the equipment to maintain it, what good is making that investment in the first place? And so if we can leverage some of this money, we might not be able to from the CO, but to get the equipment to give our team who's gaining the expertise, the equipment to better maintain it, we then extend the life and we don't leave a future council with having to make these same difficult decisions because now we don't have to contract out for sidewalk replacements, which costs us more because we can't do it, we can't do it in-house. We can actually go and buy the equipment to reclaim the streets ourself instead of actually having to contract that out, which causes delay and additional cost. It might not be possible, but that's where my was thinking was, is if we can help ourselves better maintain what we have.
Right.
It helps extend the life of these assets.
No, I love that idea. I'm just-
I got some comments too, whenever you get through about why.
Yeah. I, I do love that, that aspect and I love that we're having this open discussion because it's hard to have the discussion because we don't want to be in a quorum. But I, I just, I'm struggling with that. I'm not saying I can't be persuaded a different way, but I think you made a good point when you said, these are extensions, we want to maintain what we have, but also I want to be transparent in the fact that we, we did as a council, commit to our constituents that we would do better with our roads and not just asphalt, the gravel roads, but do better with thoroughfare and traffic and plan strategically for the future. So that's it. Thank you so much.
My comments are like 10, 11. That's, that's commercial property right now that we're hoping somebody comes in there and buys. There's, there's the opportunity, just like we were talking to the group before, part of that was to take Large Street up to the ditch, even do the engineering on that. Well, why would we spend this money on something like that? There's not a resident that's being affected right there.
Agreed. I think that point-
It's just money that, that was in a fund that somebody thought maybe we could do. Del Bella Boulevard, Del Bell- Pollard, all that out there, I think you'd be hard pressed to find one citizen that wants that.
Agreed.
Now, does it serve the city in the future? I get it. But as far as taking it out right now to use it on something that, that could serve citizens that they've been talking about, like, like the regional detention, helping us not have to increase taxes by using some money maybe to buy some equipment, I, I see that as a win. And I can't see that, that anyone in the city could fault us for that over these projects.
Yeah.
Now, I think everything on sidewalks and traffic improvements needs to be done.
Agreed.
But most of the stuff, I don't know enough about Petrie Street Asphalt Extension, whether that's helping people that live on a street that's underdeveloped, I just don't know that street. But Large Avenue, I, I see that as not serving anybody's purpose right now that I can think of.
I think I like your point about the commercial versus residential, actually. So that's a strong point there. So if we can move funds, I know Dan Johnson's probably like, oh, here we go messing with the plan, but I think that's, that's a very strong point there to, to Mayor and yours point is that maybe we can look at that and then look at drainage, look at the equipment to maintain what we have, but prioritize residential versus commercial, right? I like that.
Dan, do we have an update here on the CO yet or we're still?
I like it.
Yes, sir. Bobby suggested we might visit with bond council just to, to verify what, how we're all interpreting this, but it says, streets and sidewalk improvements as well as other improvements, including without limitation, related drainage and ancillary facilities and professional services.
Okay. Thank you for that. So counsel, here's what I'll propose, and we're going to continue to have conversations about these. If we can find agreement at least on sidewalks and traffic improvements, I think we can give Robbie and Dan and the team a thumbs up on, on those. And then we can revisit the street extensions because there's a broader conversation about that. There were two items that were, were brought up about sidewalks and traffic improvement, specifically on sidewalks. One was, counsel, would you like to see something put in there for the finishing of the open sections in Rodeo Palms? I know that's a topic of conversation because there's gaps within some of those sidewalks.
Yeah, we're actually working with Mr. Hain on that right now.
Okay.
On the extensions.
Okay. So I think, counsel, if you guys would be in support of just seeing what those numbers are, I think that'd be, be good.
So, so my, so my idea would be like if, if we didn't do the extensions or whatever, I mean, and we want to focus on drainage, our worst area would be no man's land. And so if we can kind of focus a little money on that, I mean, that'd be, you know, like replacing some driveways, doing all the roadside ditches and stuff like that, get it to where it need to go.
Speaking our love language, Robbie. Speaking our love language, thank you for that. The other item, counsel, was, Councilwoman Sarmiento brought it up, McCoy, the east side. Councilwoman, I, I think for that, when I was thinking about it, we, we need to have just an honest conversation with the, with the school district about what their plans are. I know we're pursuing the, the Tech Dot grant, which is great, but if that doesn't work out, what is the backup plan B? And if they say they have no plans to extend it, then it would seem appropriate to look to that east side, at least where it stops running it down. Would you guys be in support of having that conversation and then having staff circle back with us there to see what Plan B would be if the Tech Dot grant doesn't come through?
Yeah, 100%.
I'm looking that we have Plan A and Plan B, I mean, one of them's the school district doing it, one of them's the Tech Dot, and then we have a backup plan for C.
I'd almost, you know, if the Tech Dot deal sounds like it's probably the quicker deal, but that surprises me really, if you want to know the truth, speaking about Tech Dot being quick. But if that's quicker than the school district, which I anticipate will be, maybe Plan C is what we were talking about, about doing it with this. We don't know the timing. I mean, that's hard to have a plan, whatever, if you don't know the timing of when the first one's going to happen.
That's why my point was, we need to do the right thing on our end, what can we do? And then also, I, I'm remembering something about Tech Dot, when, when I did talk to them about the sidewalks and them building them, I think it had to be on the highway. Can we confirm that it's not McCoy? Because if I'm remembering correctly, they were going to build it, but on Highway Six because all the kids walk down the ditches and they go to Blue Water Lakes back there.
They're also still working on that project. That's not a grant, they're just working on that project straight up.
Okay. But they're, but they're going to be committed to the sidewalk from McCoy all the way down to connect?
Yes. In fact, we just talked to them about that today. I think it goes to Blue Water-
Correct. Blue Water Lakes?
Street. No, there, there's a, right by Starbucks and Best Western.
That's correct.
So are we saying that Tech Dot is already in plans to do that and then the grant that we're waiting to hear back from is the McCoy side?
It's from McCoy. And what we applied for is the section on McCoy and then funding for a portion on Large and then a portion on Masters.
Well, it sounds like Alvin ISD doesn't have a, a need to make a decision because they're waiting on Tech Dot to come through and we're wait, and they're probably going to wait on here. So that's why I want to see us at least make an executive decision for the things that we can control and do our part. But then I can imagine them saying, well, Mamville's building on the other side, so why should we build here? And really, it's just about doing the right thing. It's these, these kids, like, now we're sitting here having to make this decision because no one made the decision back then. It's not okay.
Okay, so-
Councilman Opligar.
So on the sidewalks, is this going from Lewis, Large, Charlotte and Tankersley? Is that going from McCoy to 1128? Where's that going?
From McCoy to 1128.
And how did they get selected?
Well, I-
Of all the old streets in Mamville, how did those streets get selected?
I figured that'd be the most utilized by school, school kids. I mean, because it's, it's-
Well, so, but does the school have a policy about kids not walking?
Oh, I don't know.
Yes.
Elementary, they do not-
Well-
Kids from, that live along Lewis Lane right now, were told at the beginning of this school year that they could not walk to school, to the elementary school.
The elementary-
So, yeah, so, okay, so, but we're trying to build something that I think that we haven't really validated from the school district, if that's something that they would-
You said, you know, alone.
That we're going to build something to encourage activity and they don't want to see that.
What we can tell you is we, we see these kids walking on the streets and in people's yards, so-
I, I get that.
Really trying to provide a safe harbor for them.
And then, so from Palmetto, I guess Palmetto, that goes from Large to Lewis?
Palmetto would actually connect to Terror States.
Huh?
Palmetto would actually connect to Terror States.
Yeah, so it goes from here to Terror States.
Yeah.
So, and that's kind of the same thing that Councilman Bonner was talking about, that property's for sale, right, right behind us, that property's for sale and wouldn't the developer be required to develop sidewalks that yet we're wanting to spend several hundred thousand dollars?
On Palmetto, I only know of one section that's for sale, the last five acres before you get to Lewis, unless somebody else knows something that I don't know.
Well, like there's 10 acres right back here is for sale, right?
That's not on Palmetto.
Well, so, so that's Large. But there's, but the point is, there's commercial property that's for sale, a property that's for sale. Okay, yeah, that's what we want to develop that.
Well, I mean, that, that could be, I guess, a policy discussion too, if, if, I mean, sort of what we're talking about, the scope, I guess, is a better way to say it. If, if there's a commercial, if it's already zoned commercial, would we stop the sidewalk short in anticipation of, of future commercial development and let them build the sidewalk? Well, we, we could do that, if that's what council would like to do. I mean, just in general, you know, on any of these properties.
I'll, I'll echo the points of, of Councilwoman Sarmiento, at a certain point, it's about what's doing what's right.
Yeah.
And it's the right thing to do. I, I see, I drive these roads right around here because I, I live right here and I'm constantly seeing cross-country kids running in the morning, sports kids running in the afternoon, people walking, people biking, and these are very high-traffic streets. When you get into some of the older parts of town, it's not as high-traffic as what this is. And if we wait for every property to sell in Mamville as commercial, none of this stuff is going to get done. At a certain point, we just got to put, put on our boots, tie them and let's get, let's get to work. I see these as being valuable, I see the traffic improvements as being valuable, I understand there's additional discussion about the street extensions. And while elementary kids aren't walking, you have junior high and high school kids that are walking and we can't lose, can't lose sight of that. And if going into this next school year, because we delayed putting in these sidewalks and moving on these during the school year, a kid gets hit, that's on my conscience, that's on our conscience. And these sidewalks should have been done many, many years ago.
Yep.
But now we have a council and a staff that wants to take action on these and I'm appreciative of you guys for wanting to consider these items.
Mayor and counsel, I would also like to add that we are considering a park right here and it would be a, it would be a good opportunity to, for residents in the vicinity to be able to walk to the park, so.
And I believe there's sidewalk improvements that are going on from Big Horn, with the Big Horn Cantina, that's going to be running it up 1128, that will connect it to that side over there, so there's a lot of connectivity that's happening.
I have a comment real quick.
Yes, counsel.
It's my understanding that the elementary prohibits the children from walking home because that was my daughter, she wanted to ride her bike home when she was there and they didn't permit it because of several reasons. It's on a highway and because there are no sidewalks. Had there been sidewalks to allow accessibility, they can then get a crossing guard that can get the kids into this area so they can walk home safely. But it is the nature of the streets, there's, there's no sidewalks. Therefore, the elementary kids get access to a school bus. The school bus, where typically in the state, you have to be two miles away from the elementary school to ride the bus. In this case, they provide transportation because of that. Now, the middle school and the high school kids, they're not prohibited. They, they walk in the ditches, they're there all the time. Anyway, I, I, we have to get it done, it's the right thing to do. And, and I, I do not want to sit here and wait for someone to pull the trigger and for them to make a decision. We have to decide what's right. So I would like to see those on here as priorities.
All right, counsel, so I think, let's call the question on, on this item. It's been a good and robust conversation. I'm sure there's going to be many more conversations about this. It's good, it's an opportunity for us to collaborate as a, as a team, so I appreciate that. I believe from what I heard is we're going to be getting an analysis for Rodeo Palms and then also, councilwoman, you requested an analysis for the potential costs associated with the east side of McCoy, knowing that those two are pending for what council you do see on this list for sidewalks and traffic improvements. Are you guys good with this list and are you good with the, with the order of items two? Do we have a general thumbs up for that?
The, the sidewalks?
Yeah, are you good-
And the traffic improvements?
For both. Are you good with at least giving staff some direction to start working and moving forward with traffic improvements and with sidewalks, knowing that there might be two potential, potentially two more sidewalks added to the list, but we need to get the numbers on that?
My thumbs are up with these two, also knowing what other streets or sidewalks are, now that we've kind of decided that there's some other things here. Now, I think we freed up almost two to three million, almost four million, just in this conversation. So I'd like to see the creativity of Robbie and, and Dan Johnson come back to us with, hey, this is now what we can do. So thumbs up on these.
We'll call that three dot A.
So we'll see the top, top seven projects on here?
Eight.
Well, the eighth one is the one that is, like I said, is in Tech Dots.
Okay, so moving forward with the top seven, basically.
Okay.
And counsel, now that we have this list, you know, if you see of other areas that it might be good to add a sidewalk, I know, Councilman Opligar, on your side of town, there's a lot of walkers too, and if there's an opportunity, if there's an opportunity, if you guys know of some very frequent routes, let us, let us know and we can take a look at those and see what we can do, especially if we put off the street extensions, that opens up $4 million for us to do a lot of things. So, Councilman Opligar, I'd love to work with you and staff on maybe identifying some areas over there and seeing what, seeing what we can do. All right, counsel, I think we can now officially, you guys good with moving forward to the public hearing?
Everyone out there is-
All right, counsel, so we'll now move forward to the public hearing. I believe we have from Ms. Ellie, a staff presentation on the public hearing. Ellie, thank you for being patient with us as we talked through those, those items there. Give us the high-level overview of what we got in front of us tonight.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. This is a request for changing the zoning classification of .5 acre tract of land located at 19200 Maurice Avenue, from light commercial district, State Highway Six overlay district to light commercial with the State Highway Six overlay district with a specific use permit, with conditions to authorize the use of the subject site for NICS use 62111 Office of Physicians, except mental health specialists. The subject site is currently vacant, located in the south side of Highway Six, adjacent to under construction car wash and the Twin Lakes RV Park. The applicant representing property owner is requesting SUP to allow the development of General Family Practice and outpatient diagnostic clinic. The proposed clinic will provide services such as a general family medicine, preventive care and wellness visit. According to the applicant, the facility will operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with potential weekend hours based on demand. The applicant has submitted concept plans that will need revisions to comply with city standards. Tech Stat has approved the driveway access to Highway Six, driveway connection to Highway Six, but the site plan does not include a required public access easement and the sidewalk extension along Highway Six. Subject site requires plating and site improvement for sidewalk, public and public access easement and possible detention pond. Staff reviewed the requested SUP and it aligns with city's comprehensive plan regarding location and quality commercial growth. The requested SUP is consistent with nearby light commercial zoning and uses. Moderate traffic is expected. Site gets access from Highway Six and future public access easement. Parking shall meet city code of ordinance. The current dry, drainage pattern directs runoff to Highway Six and to the adjacent RV Park. Tech Stat waived detention pond with conditions that applicant must confirm drainage agreement with RV Park and, with RV Park that shows RV Park has sufficient capacity for the subject site and also city approval is required. They may need to provide revised drainage plan and, and in addition to Tech Stat requirements, a drainage plan approved by Drainage District and the city must be submitted as part of the plating and permitting process. Enhanced buffer and fencing along RV Park is required. Site must meet ADA emergency access lighting and code compliance. Staff recommended, recommendation is approval with 13 conditions outlined in the report. Property notice sent to the adjacent property owners and published and no opposition reported. Requested SUP considered at July 14, 2025, PDNZ meeting and PDNZ commission recommended a conditional approval- PDZ meeting and PDZ Commission recommended a conditional approval with 5 to 0 voted. I want to highlight some of the conditions. One of them is about drainage plan. As I mentioned, a recorded copy of document or agreement confirming that the RV Park has sufficient capacity to accommodate drainage from the southern portion of the subject site shall be provided prior to plat approval and referenced on the plat. If such documentation is not provided, submitted site plan shall be amended and revised drainage planned, plan shall be submitted to Techstat for review and approval. Regardless of the Techstat requirements, a drainage plan approved by applicable Drainage District and the city must be submitted as part of the plating and permitting process. Another condition is, that I want to highlight it, is the site development shall follow the attached site plan. However, a revised site plan, a revised site plan, subsequent plant, plat, and drainage plans reflecting any necessary changes related to the public access easement and drainage to comply with all applicable city of Manville code of ordinances shall be submitted as part of the construction plan and building permit review process. Third item that I want to highlight it here, third condition is a minimum 10 feet wide landscape buffer yard, including landscape with one evergreen, evergreen tree planted every 30 feet along the property line abutting the RV Park. Since PDZ meeting, staff met applicant and item, this item about landscape buffer mostly approved, recently approved with city council that is mostly for the properties zoned light commercial, adjacent to properties used for residential. So staff, council may remove this condition from the conditions, condition list.
Ellie, can you say that again? Your recommendation was to remove a condition from the?
Since this condition is applied when there is a property zoned light commercial, zoned commercial, adjacent to properties used or zoned residential, council may remove this condition from the list of conditions.
Mayor and Council, I would just like to add a little bit of clarification. So the, the property that is being considered for commercial use, it's, it's not very large in compare, relatively speaking. And there is fire lane requirements, parking requirements. And with all of that, when we reviewed the site plan further, it, it looked like there are like constraints based on the size of the property. Now, when we reviewed each of the conditions that we've put, one of the conditions is the landscape buffer. We find that that's, we apply that requirement, especially when there is like single-family residential abutting, a commercially zoned property where new development happens. In this situation, what's behind this property is the RV Park with an existing fence and the operations happening. There's a separation already on that side of the property. So we are, one of the things that we are mentioning is that if, if it works for the council, even though this was not brought up at the PDZ meeting, staff, staff would be okay removing that condition out of the SUP list of conditions and let the landscaping ordinance that is in place for commercial development apply.
Okay, thank you, Joes. We'll discuss that, Council, when we get to the agenda item. Thank you, Ellie. Anything further that you'd like to add?
Applicant is here and they have a presentation.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Ellie and Joes. We will now move on to the public hearing. I'll read out the public hearing, open it up, do three calls for anybody wishing to speak on the public hearing. The applicant will call you up during the agenda item. That way, you have an opportunity to address council and answer any questions that we may have. To read this public hearing, it's a hearing input from the public regarding an ordinance of the city of Manville, Texas, amending the zoning classification of approximately 0.547 acres tract of land at 19200 Morris Ave, Manville, Texas, Pid 499589, situated in the Houston Tap and Brazoria Railroad Company Survey, abstract 483, Brazoria County, Texas, being out of outlaw at 184 of the DRA Luther subdivision of the town of Manville, as recorded in volume one, page 71 of the official records of Brazoria County, Texas, and being the same tract as recorded in Brazoria County Clerk's File Number 2024034817. Generally located along the south side of Morris Avenue, Highway 6, west of the under-construction car wash, from height from light commercial district, State Highway 6 Overlay District to light commercial State Highway 6 Overlay District with specific use permit, providing for the granting of a specific use permit with the conditions to authorize the use of a property for NAICS use 621111, offices of physicians, except mental health specialists, providing for the amendments of the city's official zoning map, providing for severability and providing a penalty in amount not to exceed $2 million for each day of violation of any provision hereof. Two, oh, sorry, 2,000. Sorry, millions are on the mind. Thank you for that, Councilman. $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof. We will open up this public hearing at 7:53 p.m. We'll do the first call for anybody wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing, second call, third call. We will close this public hearing at 7:53 p.m. Our quickest item tonight, y'all. All right, public comment cards. I believe that we have one. Is Cindy Guire here to speak on animal control? No, I believe they, they left. Chief, you did a great job giving us an overview. You answered all their comments and questions, so thank you for that. All right, any other public comment cards there, Tammy? No? All right, hearing none. We will now move on to the city manager update. Manager Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it quick. Most, most of our updates are embedded in the agenda itself in some form or fashion. But I did want to let you know, Council, that we met, had our monthly meetings with Alvin ISD, Manville Town Center, and Meridiana. We had all three of those last week. This week, we had Techstat today. And then we've got our monthly meeting with Hillwood coming up on Thursday. And then I just want to give a, sort of a shout out to our emergency management coordinator, Jamie. She has just really hit the ground running and got us all in training, a lot of training, it seems like. But it's, but it's really, really good, obviously needed. And so anyway, just appreciate what, what an amazing addition to the team that she has been. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you, Dan. Moving on to the consent agenda, any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Councilman Rossi Knox, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion?
We have a motion from the councilman. We have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. What would that be? Because Councilwoman Sarmiento isn't here. So it would be a 6-1? Okay, so six? 6-0, okay, passes a 6-0. Thank you, everyone. Item, there's no items removed from the consent agenda. Council, I'd like us to tackle number one, and then I'd like to move up the executive session because we have a few people that are here for that tonight. So regular agenda item number one, consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance 2025-0-23. I believe that we have the applicants here tonight. Gentlemen, if you guys want to come forward, let us know who you are. We'll give you an opportunity to present to us and then open it up for comments or questions. Thank you for your patience in being here tonight. As you can see, we got a lot of exciting things happening in Manville, and we hope for you guys to be one of it.
Is it okay if I pass this one?
Yes, as long as you can make sure that our city secretary gets a copy of that, too, please. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. How are you guys doing? All right, so thank you guys so much for seeing us. For the guys that have already seen this presentation last week, we apologize, it'll be pretty much the same presentation. But for the guys that have not seen it, what we're here to present is Manville Medical, our, oh, that's right, he's reminding me, I forgot my name. So my name is Johnny Huang. This is Charles Huang. And we're here to present to you Manville Medical. And so our goal here today is to really talk about the medical practice that we want to open in Manville, Texas, with a, pretty much a focus on quality healthcare for your community. All right, so who we are, we're primarily a family practice, but we also have an extension with a diagnostic center. So we first grew up homegrown in Corpus Christi and then expanded out into Houston, Texas. Our, our primary focus is preventive care, supporting the health and well-being of all of our patients. And, and that doesn't just extend to like children, it's also adults and people on your senior side of the life. Sorry. So before we talk about like exactly what our practice is trying to establish, we wanted to build a foundation so that you know, you know exactly our breadth and depth in Texas. So working in Texas is not our first rodeo. This will be the 10th practice or location that we've expanded to. So we have locations in Corpus Christi, Houston, Kingwood, Webster, Conroe. Am I missing a couple?
Umbel, Cleveland, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. And we have more or less 10 physicians already working in our community. So we've already built a very, very good network of doctors. And then, and one of our key differentiators and one thing that we really value when we're establishing a new business or a new practice is the fact that when we first started at the very first go-around, what we noticed was our patients had to jump all over the board. The time it took for them to go end to end from getting their problem fixed or addressed or looked into took quite a bit of time because they may need to go get an ultrasound or an x-ray, and we had to have the patient leave, go somewhere else. Or they, if they needed to do lab work, we had to have them go out to Quest or some other place. And the end result was just lots and lots of delays for the patient. So one of our primary differentiators is we do as much as we can in-house as much as possible. And that's part of the reason why when we're looking at building a practice, we're trying to also make sure that we can house not just the doctor, but the technicians, the equipment, and making sure that we build a facility that's actually quite expansive so that our patients can come to one place or one stop, one-stop shop type of thing. And so kind of a proven track record is we've already seen about 15,000 patients throughput for the year, and we're continuing to do that. And we're hopeful to expand to continue to do that in Manville, if you guys will let us. Okay, so Charles is going to talk about what medical services we provide. He's going to take on all the hard questions later, too, so.
So in regards to general health assessments we do, such as like school physicals, we want to make sure the kids here have a clean bill of health before they actually do after-school activities, or such as like general women's exams or male exams as well. There's different things that we actually offer, like DOTs, which is Department of Transportation. So if you have anybody that needs a CDL license, then that's something that you could actually come to our facility and we can take care of. We also offer preventative and wellness exams to make sure that, you know, do your general lab work, make sure, listen to your lungs. And the other thing that we do is the chronic diseases. So if you have hypertension or cholesterol, we do things in-house like diagnostic testing, such as ultrasounds of the heart or the neck or the legs. So typically, you'll find these in cardiologist offices. But our differentiating factor, like you mentioned, is our technicians go to these specialists already. They, we are in cardiologist office, nephrologist office, any type of specialist technician, we go there already. So we're actually bringing that something special to Manville. The last thing that I guess we can talk about is allergy testing. I don't know about you, but I'm having allergies right now. What we do is a skin prick test. We test, put your little dots on your arms and see what type of reaction you get. The differentiating factor is a lot of the times clinics offer the service, but they don't offer the immunotherapy. We actually offer the solution aspect of things.
And so just adding to what Charles said, right, we're primarily a family physician first, but then we have all these other additional services that we add on top. Okay, so exactly what is the business case? So when we kind of started looking at every location that we expand out to, does it, does it make sense for us to come out here in order to build a healthcare practice or grow the community? And we all know, and I think you guys have fully recognized this, that Manville is a growing community, and that's why you guys are so focused on continuing building out here. There's a lot of discussion I'm hearing about drainage and all that stuff, and that's because you guys are such a growing community, right? And so it is no doubt or guess that there's a lot of projections that Manville's population is going to double or triple in size in the next five to 10 years. And when we started looking at the statistics in terms of how many doctors' offices you have or family medicine practices, you have at least listed, and there might be more, but nine, and only three of which what we saw were doctors. And so when you compare against like the neighboring communities like Friendswood or Periland, Friendswood has about 34, Periland has what we saw listed about 476. And so when, when we're kind of looking at this at a macro level, one of the questions that came into our minds was why are the, the people of Manville having to leave town in order to go somewhere else to get healthcare coverage? And what we want to do is bring as much of that back into your city as much as possible. And so, so that's one of our main drivers. But one of the, the other important details actually have, not just having that medical care right here in your neighborhood, but having it readily available. And so one of the things that we establish at every single one of the doctors' offices that we work with is that we aim as much as possible, and we've been fairly successful in making it same-day-next-day care, right? So if you have any issue that you need to have seen as quickly as possible, they can come right in, they can either make an appointment online or come right in and they will be seen. And I, just, one was, one thing mentioned earlier, which is what if we see as need for working on the weekdays, our plans as of right now are to work seven days a week. So, and like Charles mentioned, we have onsite diagnostics. And the other added plus is we, we noticed that there is a bit of a growing diversity in Manville. We have 100% English-speaking staff, but we also have staff that speak other languages such as Spanish, so. Okay, so our next steps, we were here last week, we, we got that conditional approval. We're still working with our civil engineers and architects on making changes to the plan. So that, that's under revision. We, we just talked to our architects about putting in the sidewalk. We, we, one of you guys were talking about earlier in regards to our drainage plans. As of right now, we're still working that out, but we're leaning towards making that an underground detention in order to be able to properly coordinate with the neighbors and everything. So, so that's still going through iterations, and we're going to continue to work through that to kind of make sure that we meet your city requirements. But some little details, obviously, we're going to build a location that has a professional elevation consistent with your neighborhood. We have been working with Techstat, we're a medical practice, so we're not going to bring a lot of noise to the community. And we, we really have already consulted with some neighbors. We still have a couple more meetings with the neighbors. So these iterations are in process, and we're going to do our best to get it worked out. We did showcase last time that we, this is what our facade or the building would look like, and let's see if we can actually get it to load. I think click on. How do you get it to load?
We do have a data sheet in our packets that shows the facade.
Okay.
And has all of that, so we've got you covered there.
Yeah, then I don't think we need to show it. You guys see, it's nice, warm aesthetic.
Well, it's, it's up now.
It's up now?
Yeah.
All right, just ignore the corny music.
I love corny music.
Okay, so. Sorry, technical difficulties. All right, so as you can see, I mean, more or less, we're trying to build a building that can house not just a family practice physicians, but also the ultrasound technicians, the x-ray technicians, the allergy technicians, all the other technicians as well. And so we definitely are. And so we definitely are trying to maximize the square footage as much as possible in order to make sure that we can actually build a building that houses and facilitates everybody there. And pretty much that's all of our presentation. So if you guys have any questions for us.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll turn it over to the councilwoman. Just to let you guys know, I was going to vote against this, but that corny music.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
Councilwoman?
So funny. Corniest, youngest mayor I've ever met.
I'll take it.
Um, couple of questions for you. Great presentation. Sorry you have allergies. Same.
Yeah.
It's bad. It's pretty bad. Um, few questions. Um, so the first thing is, um, do you guys plan to have, um, nurse practitioners as providers or actual medical doctors?
Both.
Yeah.
Both. How many full-time on-staff medical doctors do you plan to have?
One of each.
One of each? So two full-time?
Yeah, it just depends on the, the demand.
The demand.
It really depends on the demand, yes.
Okay. Um, in your studies, how many patients a day are you guys expecting? Maybe when you start?
When you first start, it's only one to 10.
Yeah.
But eventually what we've seen from our doctors, uh, that goes upwards to 40. So it just really depends on.
Forty a day? And you can sustain that with one MD and a full-time?
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, like when we first start, that's what we do.
Okay.
But like, uh, other doctors that we have right now, I see one doctor or three NP's. So it just really depends on the volume of each practice.
And, and does your business model allow for the MD to see the patients directly? Or do you really push it more towards the, in the nurse practitioners?
It depends on the patient. So really it depends on the patient. Some patients are open to it and some patients are really not.
But you will have a medical doctor on staff?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. In the building?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then also, um, so that was two of my questions. What studies did you guys do or did you see around? I saw that in your packet here, it shows that there's only three medical providers.
Three medical doctors.
Doctors in Manville.
Correct. That's what we pulled up on our, our, our sheets.
On the sheets.
But there's nine practitioners, I believe, so total 12, yeah.
Yeah, in the vicinity.
Medical doctors.
Did you guys include Memorial Hermans Go Health in that as well?
No, I don't, I'm not familiar with there. I know that they're planning on building like 8,000 square feet for primary care, from my understanding, but not family practice, from my understanding anyway. That's in the works.
Okay. All right. And then also, um, will you guys be taking walk-in appointments or appointment only?
Uh, walk-ins and appointments.
Okay, great. And then, um, what is the biggest hurdle that you see, um, coming to Manville for you as a medical facility?
My one and biggest hurdle is the detention pond right now.
Okay.
Everything else, uh, I have no other bottlenecks except that one. That's the only one that's holding me up right now.
Okay, even though there's two massive lakes behind?
That's correct, but that's what we are working on with the neighboring people as well. So it's, everything's, uh, just hinges on that one thing, the detention.
On the detention pond. Okay. So a couple of things that I like about this is I like the location. I like that it's not immediately outside of a neighborhood. I think that on that side of the street, I think it would be a good business for you guys to have that there. I know there's a medical office down the street a little bit from, no, a dental office a little bit down the street. Um, I think that that's a good thing. I love your presentation. Hmm, I can't read my handwriting here, but I had another question. Um, as far as the, the languages, I see that, and, and I'm asking because of the service that our, our citizens are going to get, right?
Sure, sure.
Um, the other offices or clinics that you guys currently have, um, if we were to go look at your Google reviews, how well do you guys do as far as patient service, customer service?
We do really well.
Okay, great. What's your expected time for doctors to be in the room with the patient? Or do you guys have that model where it's like five minutes a patient in and out?
It really just depends on, because like there's some doctors, um, and their patient population is different for each one. So, um, one person that I can think of, we do take a little bit of time, about 15 minutes, because they are more senior patients. So because they have more, um, comorbidities, so like different types of illnesses such as hypertension, diabetes, uh, congestive heart failure, so forth. Like they are more, they take more time. Whereas like him, who's like 30-something, it's not going to take that long because he doesn't, he's probably going to come in with like a cough or something of that nature, which is going to take like five minutes. So it just depends on the patients. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. One, I have a couple of other questions on the site plan, but I don't want to take up all the time. Um, I noticed that your address here is on Bel Air 9889. That looks like a shopping strip. Do you guys have a business there?
That one is more for outpatient slash, um, billing services.
Okay, so it's more of like an administrative office and outpatient services? What's a higher and, higher, I, outpatient services? What do you mean by that?
It's outpatient services like ultrasounds, allergy testing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like that, any type of diagnostic testing. And these are things that are very useful for the doctor. That way they have tools at their disposal. So like, for example, when we do lab work or X-rays or ultrasounds, you're like, hey, this is just things that are benefiting the doctor. In actuality, they're benefiting the doctor and the patient. That way they don't have to go to different facilities, different places, and take time off again to get the results, whereas they can get the results today, except for lab work.
Great. Um, other question, are you guys committed to hiring local? Or where do you pull your, your, your staff from?
We're open to both.
To both, okay.
Um, what we've seen is we've, we've done both in the past, so it's.
How many, um, employees do you plan to have here?
Um, again, right now it's just probably front office, back office, one doctor, one NP. So like five people.
Five people to start with.
Start with, because like.
I think it would make us really happy. A lot of businesses that come to Manville like to hire local.
Okay.
So.
We'll definitely keep that in mind.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, I grew up over there in 77036, so that's why I was asking.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other Councilman, Bonner, and then we'll go Mayor Protem Lance.
Yeah, I just had, uh, one question. Uh, are y'all planning on accepting Medicare patients?
Yes.
Okay. Because we have a, we have a somewhat older patients here that are having to travel long distances sometimes because some places will not accept it.
Yeah, so.
So that's important. Okay.
We'll be taking Medicare and Medicare Advantage plans as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bonner. Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Do y'all have any, um, relationship, I guess you would say, like with, um, Methodist and Memorial Hermann? Um, is there any?
I have any affiliation with them.
Okay, nothing, nothing really like a, not a connection necessarily, but a go-to for a bigger situation?
Not whatsoever, but I mean, our doctors that do have privileges, so we could refer to them. But as far as like a direct connection, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
No worries.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Joe's question for you here, and you guys might be able to speak to this, but I'll direct it to Joe's first. I know one of the conditions here, condition, uh, is number five speaks to the preferred method for you guys to handle drainage is AB drainage. The back's going to drain towards RV park, front would drain towards Highway 6. And that's dependent upon an agreement with the RV park. But that agreement hasn't come to fruition yet. You guys are still discussing it.
Correct.
So that would be preferred. And if that doesn't happen, the condition five stipulates then that you guys would have to get approval from TechDOT and meet these other requirements. Is that, am I reading that correctly, Joe's?
Yes, Mayor. So if they're not able to provide the documentation, they have to go through, um, revision of, of the plan, approval of a drainage plan to come up with whatever the mechanism is. And like, um, the applicant mentioned, they are looking at, uh, underground construction. And at one point they were also considering, uh, talking to the next-door neighbors, which is the car wash under construction, to see if they have additional capacity to maybe share a portion of their requirement and a portion goes underground. So whatever, if the letter doesn't work out, whatever can be done to meet the requirements shall be provided and approved as part of the permitting process.
Okay. Thank you for that, Joe's. And I believe that we should be getting updated plans from them to include sidewalk extension, as that's not within the current plan submitted?
Yes. Just talked a couple of days, like last week, a couple of days back. So we will, we, we are going to do the right thing and put in the sidewalk like you mentioned, so.
Okay.
And that, that's covered under one of the conditions, which says that the plan would be revised to meet whatever, uh, standards apply. And like Ellie had mentioned, I would want to again mention that common number, sorry, condition number seven about the landscape buffer. It might be more, uh, appropriate for a different situation than this one. And I would also want to mention that, so the application, and by the time it got to PD&amp;Z, we had a couple of iterations of the site plan. So the site plan that is on the report is the most current one. Accidentally, um, the ordinance has an older version. So if, when you take an action, it should consider that aspect as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe's. I was going to touch on that. You guys are aware that there's currently not utilities on the property? So you would have to work with the car wash as well as that retail center to work together to extend water and wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you were good there. And Joe's, there's been no opposition received? PD&amp;Z gave this a unanimous recommendation?
That is correct.
Okay. And you guys, are you guys a hundred percent sold on having that green logo? Or would you guys?
No, we're open to any logo.
Okay, just because when I first saw, saw it, I thought it said Manville Medicinal with the green is where I read it. So.
No.
Might want to just maybe change it from the greens so people don't drive by pass and see it. Hey, THC is the big topic of conversation, okay? Yeah, just thinking about that for you.
If we get that simple approval, you can do purple, green, whatever color you're looking for.
Do a bread for the Manville Mavericks there, but. All right, you guys did a, did a great presentation there. Love the presentation. Good designs. Um, council, we will make an amendment to, uh, change the exhibit, which would be Exhibit B. Is there any opposition to removing condition seven, I believe? And condition seven is the 10-foot wide landscape buffer, um, in the back just because of the property size and it's already backed to in a budding RV park? Mr. Tree Guy?
I was going to make a comment about something else.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let you make a comment. I want to get your thoughts on that because it's specifically for trees.
Which one do you want to make a comment about?
Uh, let's do condition seven. And then I know you have a comment, so we'll turn it over to you there.
Okay, so I heard you say earlier that your one stipulation was the drainage, I guess? So, um, tell, guess, give us all a, kind of a roundabout idea about the trees. Um, is that standing in the way of parking or?
So from my understanding, um, the hiccup with the trees is that the fire truck needs a 25-foot, um, turning radius. So we would not be, we couldn't do that. We would have to shrink our building by about, at least 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. And, and then including that tree thing, then we'd probably be looking at 3,000 square feet instead of 5,000 square feet, to answer your question.
I am the tree guy, but, um, I think this council is also big on safety. And so we have to prioritize safety for sure, something like that.
Okay. Yeah, that's still, that's what we came up with, so.
Thank you, Councilman. And then you had a comment about something else?
Um, yeah, I love the name. I love these plucky young businesses with Manville on there. Um, I hope that that is, we're keeping that? That's, okay, very good. And I love the design. It's, it's beautiful. It's simple, but it's modern and it just makes you want to go there. I mean, it's so different from the other bland, soul-sucking, just concrete boxes that we have everywhere. This is the type of development that we want to see in Manville. Um, when I ran for office, I said I wanted uniqueness and something that's different. This stands out to me, so I love it.
Sounds great. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions?
One more.
Oh, Councilwoman? Yes.
We're also very fond of people who come to Manville to join our local Manville Maverick Association. I'm kidding. Work with the, the high schools, with the kids, um, get involved in the community. Um, there's an ER that's coming. They came before us. We gave them so much. It was difficult for them. So this seems to be a walk in the park for you guys, only because it was an ER and it was, there was opposition. However, um, their member chamber, their chamber members are involved in the community already. So that's just my request as obviously a community servant, try to get involved in the community as much as possible. We'd love to see that.
We definitely want to do outreach to schools or different, um, partner with different businesses to do that, so, yeah.
Would love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So council, we're going to do two amendment votes here first on this agenda item, and then we'll do the main motion. Um, so the first motion that I'll make is to amend the ordinance to remove condition number seven. Do I have a second for that? We'll give that to Councilman, Councilwoman Robie Robinson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Is that?
No, I was, no.
Okay, all right. So motion passes unanimously, seven, zero. Also, council, make a motion to amend to replace Exhibit B with the most up-to-date exhibit. Do I, we have a second from Councilman Bonner on that amendment? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven, zero. And now lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the first of two readings of ordinance 2025-0-23. Do I have a, we have a second from Councilman Rossi Knox? All the, with, with conditions, with conditions. As amendment, as amended. Thank you, team. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven, two, zero. Thank you, gentlemen. You will need one more approval. It will be on our next council agenda, but it will be on the consent agenda because you received a unanimous approval tonight. Thank you for being here and giving us the presentation.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you guys so much.
And thank you to staff and PD&amp;Z for your work on reviewing this item and making the recommendation.
Of course you did.
I mistakenly passed over the young gentleman who wanted to speak, but it appears that he left unfortunately. He didn't fill out a comment card, but we'll maybe see if we can find out who that was and, and get what his concern was that he was here for. So my apologies about that. Uh, council, I would like to move up now with your consent to the executive session. Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so city council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the following legal issues regarding the construction of the Manville Public Works Facility, and also for Section 551.074, personnel matters, to discuss the deliberate, and to deliberate the appointment of an alternate judge of the Manville Municipal Court. We will convene into executive session here at 8:24 PM. Manager Dan, if you can please have whoever you need to come back, that would be great. Thank you, everyone. We will return soon.
So we'll reconvene from executive session here at 9:39 PM. And we will now head into agenda item number two, consideration and possible action to approve resolution 2025-R-23. We discussed this at our last meeting. Counsel, any comments and/or questions?
We...
Hearing, none. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from the mayor pro tem, a second from councilman Rossi Knox. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We will now move on to agenda item number three. This is discussion on the facility naming recommendations as submitted by the facility naming committee. Ms. Mary Ann, would you like to speak to this item at all with, and we're going to combine counsel four, five, and six?
Yes, that sounds good.
Well, Chief took the building, which I'm very proud of. Thank you, Chief. And then the C L McDaniel building, we want to use for the fire chief, or the fire, I'm sorry. Yes, and code enforcement and all that. We thought that would be fitting since he was fire chief at one time for our city. The reflection pond, we went with guardians, that's on the back of the patrol, guardians of the community. And for the Judge Michael Culling, am I saying that right? Culling?
Yes, ma'am, Culling.
That, everyone agreed with that. We know the name. We've seen it on the highway, and we know that he's a, he's a big part of the community still. So, yes, we all agreed that this was perfect, and we appreciate everything that you guys went through to get us to this point, too. So, that's the permit, the permit building is going to be municipal courts.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's going to be the name of that.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And I want to give credit to Tammy, especially for coming up the, with the idea of the Judge Michael Culling Municipal Court. Eventually, court will be housed permanently out of there. It'll be structured like a courtroom, and I think that's a beautiful way. And thank you for the committee for that of honoring Michael and his beautiful wife for all that they do. So, fantastic. Thank you so much, Mary Ann.
I would also like to thank Tammy and Alyssa for all their help getting the history and all that for us to look at. It was, it was an eye-opener, but it was very informative. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Counsel, any comments and/or questions about agenda item number three?
Make a motion.
We don't need a motion for number three?
Well...
You're excited there. But what we will do is we will move on to agenda item four, five, and six. We'll group these together. I'll read them out, and then councilwoman Sarmiento, you can make a motion. This is a consideration and possible action to approve resolutions 2025-R-24, R-25, and R-26. Any comments and/or questions from counsel? Hearing, none. Councilwoman Sarmiento?
Make a motion to approve four, five, and six, as written.
We have a motion. We have a second from councilwoman Robie Robinson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. We took no action in executive session, so we'll now move on to regular agenda item number seven, consideration and possible action regarding the appointment of an alternate municipal court judge. Counsel, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Patton Ritter, and then also Mr. James Tittle. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Patton, congratulations to Mr. Tittle. Congratulations. We look forward to working with both of you. We look forward to your involvement in the community, supporting the Manville Municipal Team Court, and all that you'll do to help this city move forward and keep on the rise. So, thank you, everyone. Counsel, agenda item number eight, discussion on fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. We've had presentations over the past few council meetings about our budgets, about our budget. On August 1st, our city manager will be presenting formally the budget to us. This is the last meeting that we have before that point. We wanted to give our city manager an opportunity to, if there's any questions that Dan has for us, any clarification that he needs, an opportunity for us to make any final statements as he constructs and puts together all the numbers. But Dan and Tammy, one thing that would be very much appreciated, if we can just run through kind of the timeline of what to expect heading into August as well, that would be much appreciated. So, Dan, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Tammy's going to look at the schedule real quick. And I just wanted to qualify the, the presentation, if you will. What's due by August 1st is literally, it's a document that they'll be emailing out to you. August 1st is a Friday, so we're going to strive to get that before Friday. I know the first, this will be our third year of doing it together, Rosie. I think the first year, I think I emailed it out about 8:50 or so that night because it was, you know, we were really just, anyway, it was the first year we did it together. So, anyways, what would be really nice is if we had all of the documentation from the county, which we don't have yet, as far as our no new revenue and our, you know, voter-approved rates. If it's anything like last year, I think we got them on the 30th or the 31st. So, we'll have to have everything, yeah, no, of July. So, it was like right before August 1st. But anyway, so that's next week. So, we've got this week and next week to sift through seven or eight million dollars of needs that we've seen from the, from, I know, from the departments and whittle that down to what we think, you know, realistically, we'll have. And so, probably what you'll see is something if, if you were to go at the max, the voter-approved rate, you know, I guess that that would be a question. Is there any appetite for going above? I know this isn't an agenda item, but we can talk about, is there any thought whatsoever about going above the voter-approved rate?
Question, are we able to, if we wanted to at that point, or would there had to have been notice posted for that already?
So, because you're not taking any action, and you're talking about the budget, and that is something that's going to help them put the budget together.
I'm sorry, what I mean, Tammy, is my understanding was at some point in July, we would have had to have a formal action item to give staff direction.
Oh, if you were going to put an item on the ballot.
Correct.
Yes, that timeframe is gone.
That's gone, okay. So, maybe that question, I guess, Dan, is null and void.
I know. I was just curious.
[laughing]
It is a pipe dream, yeah.
Certainly must have been answering.
Absolutely not. So, anyway, we'll have, you know, what the voter, we'll have the de minimis rate, the voter-approved rate, at least what we think they're going to be, and then all the way down to the no new revenue and sort of, kind of, what are the things, you know, that we can potentially add to the, to the budget if you go with these different rates? And so, I think last year, it was somewhere, I want to say around $200,000 per, per penny, if you will. So, does that sound right, Rosie? So, there's, there's real projects involved. Obviously, you know, say if it's $8 million, then that's 16 pennies. So, I'm sure you don't want to, did I do the math right on that? No, more than that. 40 pennies, sorry. Yeah, so, that's an odd issue. We won't be able to do all 8 million, obviously is really what I'm trying to say. Did I stall enough yet?
Okay.
Are any hard copies?
Of the budget itself, certainly, yeah. What this little document is, and it's maybe 30 pages or so, but certainly, we can print it out if you'd rather.
Just look it on.
Yeah, sure.
So, Dan, before we turn it over to Tammy to talk through the timeline and schedule, are there any questions that we can answer for you that you have for us tonight?
I mean, I'd love to ask what the priorities are. That puts y'all in a, in a spot, you know, as far as you've heard great presentations. Hopefully, y'all appreciated the, the presentations from all the directors to kind of, you know, especially our new council members, to see kind of what it is that those different departments do. You know, that's, that's sort of a two-fold approach. It's, it's not a competition on who does a better presentation or anything, or who has more wants or less wants. I mean, they're all real. I mean, they're all real wants, they're all real needs. You know, we talked internally about not swinging for the fences. We're literally just trying, like, what would it take in order to do your job the best that you possibly can for the city, you know, and still be transparent, still be a good steward and all these things? So, my question would be, you know, what are your priorities? But I don't know how, realistically, I don't know how I can expect you to answer that.
Not until we see the total information. I couldn't until I see.
Sure. There are so many more needs than we have money for because of all of the, you know, the previous obligations, you know, the, all of the 380 agreements and the TERS, and, forgive me, but the homestead exemption, I mean, that's a huge chunk, credit card fee, you know, all those little things just add up. So, I guess we can come back to you with at least the credit card fees to see if that's something you want. That's something that'll pay for one of the, potentially, one of the people.
Well, Dan, I'll start with answering your question. It's tough to answer for the specific departments. I know in years past, it was, let's add people, let's add, let's add benefits. This year, we could look at as the year of focusing on equipment, and I would see a lot of logic that's behind that. I think my needs would be more so around how you guys construct this 30-page document, understanding the breakout of the difference between new revenue from new value-added compared to revenue that would be generated from existing properties. Yes, it all goes into one bucket, but understanding how those two things interact with each other would be extremely helpful. Also, one of the things that's something I would love to see us do is when we look at the tax rate impact on an existing property, let's not just compare a $300,000 home this year compared to a $300,000 home last year. Most homes increase by 10% or more. So, when we look at a home and we look at the tax rate impact, understanding how the value in the home increases and how the tax rate impact to that value increase would be helpful in understanding the numbers. The way you guys presented it last year, you know, per penny, what that number would be, and then, not just what that number would be, but what would we also be not getting associated with that number? Does that make sense? So, like, for example, if we adopted a tax rate of 54 cents, here's everything that it entails. But if you went to 55 cents with this extra money, this is what that money would go towards. Making it tangible for us and people and equipment is helpful, instead of it just being hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. I see that equipment is a really big thing. Of course, people, we always need more people, but equipment is something we haven't necessarily invested in as much in the past, and it would seem prudent this year to do that. So, those are just some of my thoughts when we talk about priorities there, something for you to chew on. Councilman Bonner?
Sometimes what I want to see, and I don't know if it's even possible, is looking at what each department needs and what not getting, something that they're asking for, how is that going to affect the efficiency of their department?
Yep.
You know, that means a lot. You know, if, I don't know, we don't really hear this information all the time. I mean, if somebody's sitting there and they're saying, right now, we can't do this part of our job, and if we don't get this extra person we're asking for, we're going to be more not able to do our job. You know, that's some of the information that I'd like to hear. And I know that's not a, putting a number on something. It's just an opinion of the people that you work with every day and knowing your department. That's just something I'd like to hear.
The Mayor Protem?
Rosie, through the course of the year, have you, I know I'm not asking for a hard number or anything, but have, do you see any kind of expectations or forecast of extra tax money coming in because of our new commercial businesses? Have you, is there any way to, have you, I guess, have you charted that or shown how we are increasing on our income, our revenue?
On the sales tax, we've only increased approximately 20%, where the payment back to, for the agreements has increased by 64%.
What's that in dollar amounts roughly?
In sales tax, we have increased to approximately 2 million, no, this year's going to be about 1.6 million, next year, I'm estimating like a 2.6 million. But then, we refunded this year 205,000 on the rebate, next year, I'm estimating 386,000 on the rebate.
In hard numbers, what you're estimating there, Rosie, is sales tax is going to increase by about a million, we'll be able to keep about 700,000, give back roughly 300,000.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Rosie. Thank you, Rosie. Any other comments or counsel, or comments or questions? Councilman Opliger?
So, one of the things I keep thinking about is, as staff, yeah, yeah, especially some, is there an opportunity to where, outsource some of the mowing and stuff, right? If we're looking at numbers of headcount, you know, outsource some of that mowing stuff, just contract it out, and then be able to hire the people that we need, just so we can grow awful big by having people mowing grass, right? It's just, and I know there's a lot of grass to mow, but that's just one of the things. The other one is, you know, some of the, as each year, this will be the third year I've done this, right? The staff asks for a certain amount, and I think I asked, I said, what percentage of stuff have we fulfilled in their ask? I know last year, like, when they talked about, I think it was the, buying into the insurance pool or what, right? Is that something that should be looked at again this year, right? Because, I mean, you know, that's all pretty important stuff.
Yeah, and that number went up, last year it was 450 or so for the updated service credit. Now, what'd you say, 6? Yeah, so that...
Also, it's just, and the longer we ignore it, the higher the price gets.
Exactly.
Yeah. What's the impact of that?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the impact?
The insurance pool, Chad?
Yeah, so I put some stuff, and I'll dig it back out, but I put some stuff together last year for counsel. So, it's part of our TMRS retirement, and it's an updated service credit. So, basically, and I don't know if anybody can explain this better than I can, it's, the component itself, Manville doesn't have, we've, I guess, done it twice in the past, sort of as a one-time catch-up. So, I guess as an example, if you started working for the city at 21 years old and you were making $30,000 a year, and then you worked your way up to becoming a director, and you're maybe making six figures or something like that, it bridges the gap when it comes to your retirement, right? Am I saying that right? So, that, it brings it all up to your, to whatever you retire at kind of dollars. I think they have a similar thing in the military. But anyway, so it's basically a way to true it up, and so you can do that periodically. And like I said, Manville's done that twice that I know of. Do you remember when the years were, roughly?
We did it right after the charter, so probably around 2012-ish, and then we did it not too, too long before Kyle had left.
Yeah, maybe 2021, 2020, something like that, maybe? So, there are other components in that, though, and one of them is, I guess, the cost-of-living adjustment. Like, does that factor into it? So, TMRS has given us the different numbers. I'm going around the horn to try and answer the question. We're one of the few cities in the area, in Brazoria County, that doesn't offer that. It's not really an issue until we hit, you know, those folks hit retirement age, which, you know, will be upon us. Last year, I guess we had, what, three retirements last year? Three? Yeah. So, I don't know of any this year. So, we're okay, but whenever, you know, our... I said, I don't know of any. Somebody, throw me a lifeline, am I close on this?
So, the good thing about the service, updated service credit is it's not every, it's not a huge gap every year for every employee. Where it really hits is just like Dan had mentioned, so, and I'm going to go back to when we did median pay increases across the board. Some people got maybe a $30,000 a year pay raise for being underpaid when those median pay raises came in. Shortly after that, we did this service update. So, if the staff's already caught up and there hasn't been a big adjustment in someone's pay, you're not going to see a big difference on the numbers each year. It's only when maybe a public works employee goes from starting to maybe a heavy equipment operator, and that could be maybe a $4 or $5 difference in their pay for the position that they're doing. That you would see a difference in, and then you pay it over the course of time. So, TMRS computes that based off of the formula of when they would retire and back paying. So, if they've been here 10 years, they're going to take that back 10 years' worth of catch-up and then divide it out based off of when it would be expected that they would be retiring. So, it's not one big lump sum at a time, and it's not every employee every time, if that makes sense.
A little bit, tracking some, it might be because it's late.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about cost of living.
Cost of living is the big, cost of living would affect everybody.
If we could just get a breakdown of what that would be within the budget, maybe ask Crystal's assistant to help us put together a summary, give us some of what that breakdown would be. Those are good points, Councilman Opliger, and getting some clarity around that. It seems like the best thing is going to be just getting, really breaking it down for us, and not just it being dollar amounts, but what would those dollar amounts go to? What are we getting? What are we not getting, based off of lowering taxes and whatever it is that's going to be proposed? Councilwoman, I see you're muted.
How hard would it be for us to get an update on what each department actually got? Because this is, again, our third time, at least for three or four of us here, and I feel like we get these budgets, and then we approve it or we don't, or whatever, and then we don't hear back. We don't know what actually was attained, what did they get, what vehicles were purchased, what wasn't purchased. We had to make a note for this because we had to make adjustments for that. I would like that for each department, and show us, this is what you guys approved, this is where the money went to, and unfortunately, we're still lacking here. Because I don't want us to approve this or not approve it, or have budgets allocated, and then we don't, we don't know what actually comes of the budget that we approve. So, yea or nay?
I think that's a good idea. I mean, what we've shown in the past two years was, especially at this, the August 1st sort of preliminary budget, is here are, here are all of the staffing requests that are currently included in the budget, the draft budget. Here are the ones that didn't make the cut. Here are all the supplemental requests that are included in the budget. Here are the ones that didn't make the cut. So, that would be a great place to start, because this is, it's a finite number. It's, you know, I sent that to you the other day, Harry, what was, maybe, say, 25 new positions or something like that? And I think two years ago, we had zero new positions added, and last year, maybe we had five or something like that. So, I can show you, and, you know, then, I bet a lot of those are still ones that we're asking for again. Okay, it's been three years, I keep asking for a billing official, or, you know, or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
So, ones that are kind of still out there.
And then also, when I'm thinking about the requests, I know that equipment, we need machinery, we need tools, we, our employees need the tools to do their job, they need to feel well, taken care of, which we have done with benefits, et cetera. I'm leaning a lot towards what are the tools that the city can acquire to make things more efficient while simultaneously offering phenomenal customer service to our external customer, the citizens, and our internal? So, like Chad's request for his software, Joe's request for software. I think that if we don't approve at least money to cover that, we will be the city left behind, like I said we were three years ago, which we're not, we're now on the rise again. But those are the things that I think in order to keep up with the times, to make sure that we don't fall behind, because as fast as technology is changing, we haven't even caught up yet, and it's about to do leap years ahead, and if we don't have that, then we're going to be leap years behind. So, that's something that, that I think that would be a priority, at least for me. I don't, you know, I don't know about counsel, but I think that would be a priority. And then also...
Can I ask a qualifying question?
No, kidding, of course.
So, basically, external versus internal?
Yeah. Yeah, because I think that when we focus on both, you know, you and I had these conversations in council about the new culture that we've been striving for is excellent customer service, making our people feel loved and welcomed outside and inside. And, you know, community success starts with employee success. It starts here, and we have to give them the tools that they need to do their job effectively and efficiently. There was one more that I had, and I can't remember, but ultimately, yeah, I'd like to see what that looks like to get apples to apples. This is what we asked for, hey, last year, we got this, we still need this. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think the one question that would help, Dan, and it's the elephant in the room, is, is anybody on council willing to raise taxes in order to fund this $8 million worth of asks that staff has presented to us?
Well, I think the question is, like, last year, we talked about, you know, I remember you and I specifically saying, yes, we want this homestead exemption, and I remember my statement was, I trust staff can figure it out. And 8 million's huge, that's not a couple million and try to cut from here and cut from there. I mean, if we don't come up with the funds for that, then we really are struggling. And so, that's going to be something that I personally feel like we're going to lose sleep over, because what are the options? What are the options? I mean, we were hoping that hopefully by this year, we'd have more tax revenue, that we would have more developments, we would have more homes and inspections and utilities, and it doesn't seem to be catching up with the needs. So, what are some strategies that we've talked about?
What did 10% cost us in dollars?
900,000?
Was that, we not know until we get the counting?
Oh, well, that's true.
Will we not really know that number until we get the counting, till then?
I could probably get it, based on the estimate.
I mean, the estimate was it was going to be around a little less, little less than a million dollars. But did that turn out to be a true number?
That's a good question.
I can go back to last year's and calculate it for you.
I'm just wondering, you know?
That's a really good question. Councilwoman, I think to your point, unless we raise taxes, we're always going to be in a game of catch-up because of these development agreements that we've gotten ourselves into. We're having to provide a service and a good to so many new areas that we just don't have the revenue for. So, unless we find a way to make up, I think what is the shortfall that we're projecting, about $3 million compared to what we're giving back every year in these development agreements? So, unless you find a way to make up that $3 million on a year-to-year basis, you're never going to end up getting ahead. It's always going to be where you're playing catch-up. Now, there's definitely leaps and bounds that we can make, and we've been making that, but you're never going to be whole, and it's the argument of what comes first, the cart of the horse, the chicken or the egg. Would we be able to even do some of the things that we did if these development agreements weren't made? Because if the development agreements weren't made, would the development have come? It's the question that keeps me up at night.
Dan, sorry, when was the last time we, I know last year we adopted, or the year before we adopted, the was 56 cents? So, when was the last time that our voters approved a tax increase so that we could get what we needed?
I don't think the voters have ever...
We've never done that.
But it was raised from, what, 59 cents to 67 cents?
That was years ago, though, no?
Yeah, quite a few years back. So...
And we actually dropped the rate last year.
The rate has, since like, what, 2017, the rate has consecutively gone down.
Gone down.
While the rate goes down because values go up, taxes have continued to go up. But, yeah, I don't think the voters have ever had to vote on a tax rate.
Okay. So, what would we have to decide on, then? What is the rate? What does it look like in the numbers? Have we done the numbers? If we keep it at 56 cents, what are we looking at budget-wise? If we go up 57 cents, 58 cents, we go down 55 cents?
That's what I'm saying. That's what we're going to have to do, you know, this week and next week. That'll be part of, and we don't have the actual numbers from the county yet.
Oh, because of the...
And if it's like last year, they'll probably come in like next Wednesday or Thursday, and then the things due to y'all by charter on Friday. and then the things duty all by charter on Friday. So, and this is, at least for the last two years, it's been, it's a preliminary budget. It's, again, it's, let's see, last year's was, well, I said 30 pages, it was 107 pages, but because it has to include the current fiscal's, you know, year-to-date and all that kind of good stuff, so that's the majority of it. But it'll just have to be projections, you know, on what we think it's going to be.
Dan, you did a poll online, what was the ultimate feedback, so that council can know what the community is saying?
Yeah, so there was over 1,100 votes, 69% of the votes said that even if additional money went to police, drainage, and roads, they do not want to see their taxes raised.
And then what about the others?
I think that the next amount was, people said yes, or the next amount would say unsure, they want more information, and then a very small amount said yes.
Okay.
Councilman Bonner?
Thank you.
So, Rosie, right now, by what we changed, when was it, last year, whenever we changed the amount of, what do we call it, the 50% that we put aside?
Fund balance?
The fund balance. What's that, what's that amount right now? Is it, are we back up above the 50%?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, my question is, was, is that really necessary? If we look around our, everybody around us, most everybody, is it what, 90 days? About what everybody's at?
Yes, sir.
And the whole reason that drove, what was the whole reason that drove us going from, what were we at before we went to 50%?
Truth, I think the real reason was to have a policy and stick to it, I think it was...
But did pandemic lend anything to everybody thinking that we needed to increase that?
So, I can speak to that. So, the amount had always been a significant amount in the fund balance, it had always actually been, since I first started on council in 19, at about 50%. The policy stated that it needed to be between 15 and 25%, but it didn't stipulate what it needed to be, 15 to 25% of, and if it was of whatever the fund revenues were, like the general fund revenues, we were well above that. So the policy was updated to reflect the established practice since before I joined council. So that was kind of the impetus and the reason behind it. Now whether or not that's legit or best practice, I can't speak to that, but that's why we just, we
I'm just, I'm just wondering, in, in times where we're, if we're $2 million short on a budget, that's something that we can generally work with? How much were we short last year? Do you remember? Anybody remember? And we worked to try and cut those numbers down from the asks, okay? But when you start getting to $8 million, it's hard to start whittling on that. And is this something that we could, is that money available to dig in to offset the difference?
We can use it for one-time purchases, for example, your equipment, we can go in there and use it for some of the equipment, but not for, to fund payroll.
Well, what I'm thinking of is, probably, would you say half of the budget is equipment? Or what was the percentage, just ballpark, just thinking, maybe half, or at least 30%? Something like that was equipment? That cuts them out, and if we can work that way, and I know some people were going to look at grants for different things, that maybe that's a way to whittle a little bit.
Am I wrong for thinking that part of that fund balance went towards the barrel cleanup in the, before we got the, so that came in handy, because we were actually discussing using those funds for other things, just like we're talking about now, and because we had it there, we were able to get out there and do the cleanup? So that's, that's one of those scenarios, where last year, we were having these conversations, and we weren't expecting a barrel, and it just, it came out of nowhere, and here we are with, what, a million-dollar cleanup fee or something like that?
Well, and thankfully, you know, everything was done the right way where we could get that reimbursement, those reimbursements through FEMA. Would you have three different applications by the time it was all said and done?
And how much do they still owe us?
They only owe us for the EOC right now, which is about a, maybe a little less than 100,000.
Because wasn't it supposed to be five years before we got that full reimbursement? So we got it within a year?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all are crushing it, that's awesome.
Few, few questions here, just, Rosie, the 51, the 50, we're above 50%, what, what dollar amount are we above that 50% threshold?
I'd have to calculate it.
Okay, do we know what percentage we're at?
No, I haven't done the due numbers, because I was waiting for the interest to come in.
Okay, because, Councilman Bonner, to your point, that 50% is always going to grow as our general fund revenue and budget grows. So it's supposed to be at roughly seven and a half, I believe, because our budget's 15 million, but if our budget now grows to 18 million, we got to substantially increase that, and that's a huge hit, because that's money that we're pulling away from police and public works, or the HRIS system, to put to the fund balance.
That's kind of my point of, does it need to really be that big?
Yeah, I see what you're, what you're talking about.
I mean, as, as the budget grows, and we start talking about this 50%, and we get to, we get to the point down the line where our budget's $30 million, to think that we're going to have 15 million sitting there versus what are we going to have to use it for in the case of another hurricane or something? Are those costs going to go up as much as, percentage-wise, a cleanup from a hurricane? Is it going to jump as much as what we're thinking we have to put into this to keep it at 50%?
It all depends on how large of a
It's an unanswerable question.
Exactly.
Okay? I mean, if we look at, at history, it tells us we're not going to have another hurricane for 20 years. But do we believe that? Nobody does. Nobody knows. So I'm just trying to think of ways we can offset a deficit of many million dollars to get stuff we need. We're going to have to get creative and, and really dig deep on the ass to begin with. I think one of the things we talked about was vehicles, you know, I don't think we have the data to say that we can't take one of these used vehicles that's fixing to get to the 10-year mark and auction it and buy a new one, when it could be used not as a police vehicle, not as an emergency vehicle, but as something in the city that somebody couldn't use. We just don't, everybody, everybody, the only comments I ever heard when we asked that question was, well, the costs are too much. Based on what? Nobody's, can tell me that data. I mean, one of these days when we have fleet management, I think then we can start tracking that more carefully, but right now, I just, I just think that's someplace we might could cut down. You know, maybe we can use a vehicle that's, that's six or seven or eight years old, or nine years old, and keep running it for a little bit, to do some job that somebody's not having to bus 100 miles an hour down the road to get to someplace. Just my thought.
Good thoughts, Councilman. Manager Dan?
Well, so I'm looking back, so two years ago, our voter approval rate was just barely over 56 cents, and the proposed rate was 56 cents, the no-new was right at 50 cents. So we went forward with the 56 cents. That's really about all that we could do without going to the voters. Last year, on the other hand, no-new's still about 50 cents, almost 51, the voter approval rate was more like 61 cents, and we stayed with the 56 cents. So we left four or five pennies on the table, so to speak, so I mean, that's at least a million dollars.
Which it's uncommon to see where your vote, usually you see a drop, it's uncommon to see where it actually goes up and gives you that opportunity.
Yep, and then we also have, it's de minimis rate, I guess, and what, is that half a million? $500,000 for the last three years? So whatever, right, I believe that's correct. So whatever you leave on the table carries over, so you can actually draw from that and still not have to go to the voters on it. It's like, anyway, it's just a three-year, what do you call that, sort of?
Accumulated.
Accumulated, yeah, thank you, Bobby. So we'll have that as well. But to your question a while ago, Mayor, so is there an appetite to, can we pose that as a scenario, that we go as, you know, high up to, up to the voter approval rate as we can? Or are y'all anticipating staying at 56? Because if it's at 56, I don't know how we fund a jail, I don't know how we fund all of these new things that we never had before, as an example. I'm just throwing that one out, but there are things that we never had before until this year, that we're going to have to be funded.
I think we need to look at the rate, up to, up to what's available. Doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right.
But at least that we can make educated decisions based on what can be done.
Break, the breakdown per penny? You know, what would each penny entail?
Right.
Compared to what are we, what are we giving up?
Okay.
I've stated in years past, I don't have an appetite to raise taxes at the same time.
I don't think any of us do.
Correct, 100% agree. At the same time, we need to understand, we, if we forego things, we as council need to be able to articulate it to the community as to, all right, this is what you as a community are going without, exactly to your point there, Councilman. Rosie, I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer this now, you know, I know that our department heads and the entire team does a very good job of being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and making sure to effectively manage their budgets. How much are we projecting as a savings in this year, when we look at what was budgeted to spend compared to what we're actually going to spend?
Huh?
So for example, let's just say we're going to spend
What's left in the kitty?
What's left in the kitty?
Oh, easy, thank you.
Did we not hire some, certain people we were wanting to, and?
Are we under or over?
Half a million.
Okay, half a million, that could basically roll over potentially as a one-time expense that we could use for some equipment or vehicle or something like that, okay?
And that's what I, normally what we try to do is in September, if there's some equipment
that they've requested and we can fund it with the current budget, we try to do that.
Yep, correct, and we try to get a head start on vehicles to be the first in line there, which makes sense, because we have potentially unfilled positions, and that's lapsed salary, that then you can use that, and that accumulates over, over time. What about interest from money that we've been holding through previous debt issuances? Are we looking, are we looking on that?
I haven't reviewed the numbers, I can tell you that the interest revenue is decreasing quite a bit, because of course the projects are, some of the projects are coming to conclusion, plus the rates did drop a little bit, so we can't really count on it too much for next year, because we don't know what it's going to be.
Makes sense.
I think we were really able to capitalize on the interest when it came to the FFNE for the, for the different facilities, because the, the construction numbers, I think, is what was moved forward with the bond, or, excuse me, the COs, and for whatever reason, you know, and that was a significant amount of money, obviously, to furnish an acre building, you know, as an example, and we'll have the same thing with, with public works and building next door. So I know we were able to use some of that interest to help sort of make up the difference there.
Dan, Manager Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
When we get those final numbers, are we going to be able to see how much revenue the city will gain if we stay at 56, if we go to 57, if we go to 58, so that we know exactly where we need to land in order to fully fund the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And also the reverse, if we went down from 56 to 55, 54, 53, looking at what that, hey, who knows, we might be like Stafford and say no property tax, just zero it out, right?
I think that's all the time we have.
I'm going to go back and move the tape back.
Wanted to see the reaction there.
He's motioning to end.
I'll, I'll kind of wrap this up here, Council Forrest, I think this shows to anybody in the community that's watching, that we don't have an appetite to raise taxes, at the same time, we do understand that there's a cost to provide a high level of service to the community, and we want to make sure that we're wise stewards of their money, that we don't take the money that they provide to the city for granted at all. Rosie, I know, and Dan, you guys have a lot of work on your hands, and we appreciate all that you guys do. We're here to be a help and an assistance, so if there's anything that we can do over these next two weeks, please let us know, and we look forward to seeing what you guys will present here on, on August 1st. Any other comments or questions from council?
I move we adjourn.
All right, no council comments, so we will make a motion to adjourn from Councilman Bonner. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Robie Robinson, she beat you, Crystal.
Oh.
Yeah, she beat you there.
Good job.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. We will adjourn at 10:21 PM. Thank you, everyone, good night.
You took the under, didn't you? You took the under, didn't you?